Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board for Tuesday, our May 23, 2003 meeting. A 2023 meeting. Wow. I wish. Let's turn back time a little bit. We do not have any approval not required plans or A and R plans. We do have minor site plans this evening, the first of which is a minor site plan review for Stephen Sena at 69 Cully Street for a change of use. Do you have a site plan and see if Mr. Cully is online or who will be presenting this evening?
Let me see if Steve is there. If anyone is an attendee and is here on behalf of 69 Cully Street, use the raise your hand function. I don't see anyone yet.
What am I missing? I am missing the opening statement.
Oh, I got it right here, Paul.
You have it? Thanks.
You can keep that. I just kept it for you.
Oh, thank you. You know we're going to need it.
I knew we needed it at one point or another.
As we are waiting for the first applicant, I would like to just read a general opening statement. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. First, would state your name and address. Two, approach the center of the table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. And three, the planning board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. Is there anyone here that would be doing any recording? Seeing none. Okay. And if there's any conversations in the chamber, please take them outside of the room so we can have. Thank you.
Who's the main desk, man?
The main desk? Where in the hearing? We're here this evening. Need a copy of an agenda?
Yes.
Right there at the front table?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I still don't see Steve or anyone here for his, so you skip it, I suppose.
We will move off of that and go into another minor modification this evening to special permit and site plan approval 2022-7 for 0 Ashburnham Street regarding Mad River Solar request to transfer permit.
I don't know if anyone's going to be here for that. Chantel, did they say if they were going to be here for that? The Mad River folks?
I would hope so. I thought they asked to be put on the agenda, so I thought that there was going to be someone representing them here today.
Because that's Thomas De Newville.
Yeah.
And I don't remember who the...
Yeah, John Barrett.
Yeah, okay, so, well, you know John, but he's...
So if nobody's there, we will go into the hearings.
Okay.
That being said, moving right along. We are into the public hearing segment this evening. First in our agenda is a special permit and site plan review regarding Silva of 8 Wilmont Street for one family dwelling, which is actually continued from our prior month.
Hi, guys. Dave, what do you want up on the screen? Is there anything in particular you want up?
I'll let you do it, Dave.
Is there anything in particular you need up or no? You're okay?
Maybe the proposed site plan.
Okay, so I have existing conditions, sheet two.
If I could.
Oops, sorry. Addendum sheet...
Through the chair, of course.
Yeah.
Parliamentary.
Site plan details.
The existing conditions plan is a new plan that was added to the package to show the existing grading across the site and the structures on both sides of the property as they exist, plus the existing driveways that are there already. And it wants to try to, because there was a confusion about proposed and existing grades, and wanted to show that there's already a 10% slope across the property.
While you're talking, I'll pull that up if you bear with me for one second.
Okay. So on the sheet that's shown, you can see that the property at 12 shows the existing house 10 feet off the line. It shows the trees that are remaining on the property as a buffer. It shows the grading across. It was a lawn at one time when the house was existing and the kids played up there. And then it shows the extra driveway that they have for that lower property. They show a retaining wall, more pavement, show the garage in the back, and then they show another house in the front corner. So all that's up against the property line now, and all that receives that 10% grade and that water running across the site. If there's a heavy storm, it runs unabated into the property, perhaps into the garage or into the house itself, or pass that down onto Lunenburg Street. And I know you're under extensive review of Lunenburg. You're having problems with drains down there, manhole covers are coming up and everything else, so I think that some of the interceptor trenches and other things you're going to see that we're going to put on property and recharge our water is going to help the situation with the house, the garage, and Lunenburg Street. If you want to bring up the proposed site plan, I'll be ready for that. By the way, my name's David Sidowski. I'm the principal of DJ and Associates, Roda Clinton, Massachusetts. Along with me is the owner, Eliza Silva of the property at 8 Wilmont.
Is this... Wait one second. Is that the one you were talking about?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So the changes that we've made since the last meeting, since we were encouraged by engineering or things were pointed out, well, one of the things was we extended the cedar fence all the way to the back of the property. And we called out that it's supposed to be a cedar fence. It's right one foot off the property line. There's a note at the very front of the house.
Yep, I see it right here.
And there's also a note in the back about how to extend it to our property line. Also, on that loom stockpile area, we proposed to put straw wattle around the down gradient sides of it. And we also have a note about putting tarps over the top of it so we won't have any louse that'll occur on the site. Louse is a wind-blown silt for anyone in the audience that doesn't quite familiar with that term. So that should help with the stockpile area. That's a loom. The loom is going to go there. It's going to be put up in that corner because it'll be away from all the construction. That loom will come out of where we're going to put the interceptor trench, where the house is going to go, where the driveway is going to go, where the recharge pits in the front and the back are going to go. All that has to go somewhere. If it's good material, it'll go there. The material to be hauled off-site will be in the temporary stockpile up in the front. Again, that'll be covered with tarps, and that'll also have straw wattle that'll surround the base of that to prevent any erosion running off. There's a silt fence that extends around the east, the north, and the west sides of the property. And then there was an interceptor trench that we added to the plan. It starts even with the front of the house and goes all the way back to that leach pit. It's three feet wide, three feet deep, up a little bit, right in there. That's full of stone. It's got a Geotex fiber on the top, and then it's got four inches of loom on top of that. So many waters that are coming across the property will hit the interceptor trench and percolate down into the groundwater, causing recharge along the whole length. Any additional excess will go into the leach pit at the end of the property. So we think it's a way to control water from hitting that garage, like it has been, going over the retaining wall and going down towards Lunenburg Street. Again, in the front, we've got a storm filter in that front corner. We have a trench going across the driveway. Engineering had recommended putting a driveway trench in, so we answered their needs. We put that across. It goes into a storm filter, which takes the silts out of it, and then it will go into those Kultec basins and recharge the aquifer. So we'll be trapping more water and putting more water into the aquifer. It won't be running down the driveway. It won't be going onto Wilmont. Our conditions now are, with the runoff being controlled, are less than what's happening on the site as it now sits. There's also the roof drains are all being caught in downspouts. Those are being brought to those Kultecs in the back. So the whole entire roof system is being recharged into the aquifer as well. Pretty much the whole site. And then there were some comments, engineering, I have an erosion, or excuse me, Mr. Burke has an erosion control blanket just to the north of where that snow storage is going to go. That blanket is to go down to protect the slope that got opened up to make the driveway a nice even run. There's talk about what happens if the erosion control blanket fails. We'd be willing to put a retaining wall up in there instead of the erosion control blanket, and that would control any of the runoff that would come from the soils. I just got this response letter from engineering at about 4:30 tonight. That was one of their topics, if they want us to put some type of stone terra or some type of one of those one-to-two-foot-high retaining walls along there.
And we're talking about the left-hand side of the site?
We're talking about the driveway in the front. On the right-hand side of it, there's an erosion control blanket, four feet wide. Instead of the blanket, engineering would like to see a wall established there.
And that would probably help level things off, too, right?
It would, and it would keep anything from going in the driveway. I agree with their assessment, and we'd put some type of stone behind it, and we'd have a four-inch pipe that would come down. It could go right into that trench drain. It could go right into recharge.
Because I know one of the issues they have were the pretty steep slope, so maybe that'll terrace it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, the slope's only a one-foot change in elevation, but still, it's a one-foot change in elevation. So instead of the erosion blanket, we could put a retaining wall.
There's a one-foot change in elevation across the site. I was reading your existing topo. It's almost 10 feet.
Yeah, but in the area where the four-foot blanket was going to go.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know. I was talking about the overall site grade.
Yeah, overall site. There's already a 10% grade across the whole thing.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I guess, open to any que... Oh, also, we put together an extensive O and M plan that shows the maintenance of each of these structures I talked about, how often it has to be reported. The authorized enforcement agency would be the ones that would be available to get all this stuff as detailed in your stormwater regs. And there was one drawn up for each of the 10 different applications on the site. There were some comments because I had the term "and/or" in each one, and they want me to strike out the "and/or" and make it say "and." Easily, we could do that. And we could work that with engineering if this was to be closed, and to their satisfaction, make sure the plans agree to what they like. Thank you.
Could you also express whether or not the landscaping shown on the plan would remain? They do depict some larger trees. Are those to remain? Sorry.
Yes, and before we go any further, we have some pictures. We had promised we would bring pictures of building that...
Mm-hmm.
He's got a package for everyone. There's six or seven pictures in each package, as promised.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just, for the audience, I was just putting up this, which is, for those that aren't, can't see that, I think that's pretty similar to the drawing that they presented earlier.
Just in reverse.
Yeah, it's mirrored.
We have some extra that we can give to the audience.
Okay. And I also noticed on the architectural, the diagram itself, right there on the upper right, about the style to be used. I can't read. Can you read?
Yeah, let me zoom in. Are you talking about the red print right there?
Yes.
The front main gable section will be board and batten, as shown in the picture attached.
Yep.
The picture.
Like this.
Yeah, so you have shakes, you have vinyl and shakes for this one, and the alternative is the board and batten and vinyl alternative. I personally, I don't care whatever the board wants or neighbors, I like the picture better than the board and batten, because I don't like the vertical and horizontal.
I like this one.
Yeah, that would be my preference.
We did put that on the plan because we said that we promised that we would put something on, so we put on the plans, and we have handout pictures to give.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. So unless someone feels strongly about that, my suggestion would be the pictures.
To the chairperson, there is a line of disturbance that all the existing mature trees shown on the site won't be touched past that disturbance line. You can see the dash line that goes up and all those trees.
There's a limit of disturbance.
Yes, right there, and it goes all the way out and includes that clump right there.
Okay. And the one to the front on the left?
The one in the front on the left, that's a new planting.
Okay, that's a new planting. So everything to the...
Along with the ones that are next to the stairs on either the right and the left, and then the one that's over on the corner of the building, those are all new plantings.
Okay, and it's going to be grass from the driveway over to the right-hand side to the...
Yes.
Okay. Got it. All right. See that?
And of course, it was talked about before, we would not request any additional pavement to be put on the site ever, and especially on the right-hand side with the snow storage to go. And if a retaining wall, one foot high, did go in there, it would make it so that driveway couldn't go up in that section.
Okay.
So that would be another benefit, I guess, of a one-foot wall to go along the edge of the driveway.
All right. Does the board have any questions at this time, first?
Not right now.
Okay, anybody, Ellen or Alex, any questions at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this moment.
All right. We will now open it to public comment. So if anybody would like to comment on this application, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Thanks. I'm Cheryl Jarvey, the owner of 12 Wilmont Street, the Butter. I'll be short this time. So I noticed on the drawings covering the debris and the excess loom that he proposed a silt fence, which I looked it up and I saw what that is. My question is, when will you, when will they install the cedar fence? I think Paul at the last meeting suggested, before you start anything, to put that in. I remind you, nice weather in New England is short. To look at construction and debris is unpleasant, and, you know, there's no guarantee that some of the debris might come through the tarps. So that's reminding us what we talked about.
Okay.
And I think Dave addressed that not to pave the front right-hand side of the house so that it can't become more parking space. So I think he addressed that. I also wanted to talk about, I think Paula at our last meeting had said, can you do something, it's my words, not yours, to make it more aesthetically pleasing and maybe a different kind of shake, a different kind of, something on the side, my words, so it doesn't look like a prison, all vinyl siding. And the agreement, as I understood it, was that Mr. Silva would document on the drawings as well as show pictures of where he would make aesthetic changes. And I didn't see that. So they could show you a picture of the Taj Mahal and never having any intention of building the Taj Mahal, because there's no commitment. So anyway, you've got a little circle with a little picture there. So my question is, what are the commitments of what they're going to do? Also, I noticed on A4 that there was an optional window. That's the right-hand side of the house as I know it. It's like, why is the window optional? Again, I don't want the prison look. And secondly, I'm confused about, because I don't read drawings for a living, but the pretty pictures he sent out to us seems to me that the garage was on the left-hand side, not on the right-hand side, if everything we've talked about. So I'm surprised to see this.
So this is just, this is just for illustrative purposes?
Right.
It's designed to be on the left-hand side?
That was constructed in 2001. It's a silver building.
Yep, it's fine.
But it's like, it's kind of a misnomer to show you a picture, but this is like it, but something like it, but not, you know?
I think, I think the intention is it's going to be identical, just mirrored.
Identical, but absolutely opposite. Anyway, okay, that's my point, is for those of us who don't read drawings, it looks like something different. And I just asked the board, hold them fully accountable to whatever they're proposing whenever you give them a permit, that they actually do what you said.
So Mr. Jarvey, what you see up there, what they propose, matches the site plan, is what's the prior concerns, so at least that building matches the site plan. This is, this is a rendering of what it could look like.
Just for materials.
For materials.
So that's what it's going to be built as. These are what the materials are going to look like.
If you have any comment on, if you would like to provide any comment on what they're proposing, you can do that.
Well, my comments are the aesthetics, that's all. And the optional window, why not a commitment to a window?
So just, I'm going to pull it up here. You're talking about the side that faces you? Oh, no, I'm sorry. The side that faces you, this side right here.
That one, and if you look at the writing, it says optional window.
So you just, you want the window there?
Well, yes.
We can just tell them to put the window there?
Yeah.
Perfect. Yep, no problem, guys.
Okay. I was pretty surprised when I read in the narrative they put out that they plan, in bold highlight, they plan to tell the new owners and include on the deed that the new owners have to maintain and repair the water system. That made me say, what? And they said, due to the critical nature of it. So are they going to build a house knowing there's a problem there, knowing that when they're long gone and you guys are thinking about something else, that there's going to be a critical water problem? And it seemed that my naivete seemed a silly thing to be saying that they will put on the deed that the new, the new owners are required to look at it, maintain it, and repair the water system. So I trust the Pittsburgh engineers have thought about that. That concerns me. And my only other piece is accountability. You folks give them a permit, and you agree that it's all clean and clear. Who do I contact if indeed things happen, that they don't follow the plans or the conditions? I.e., they cut down trees, they neglect to put up the fence? Or in their narrative, they say, daily, they will sweep the debris so it doesn't come onto the street. Who am I supposed to contact? Should that accidentally happen? Because they'll be long gone the second you give them a permit, too. If they neglect to tell the construction workers that, whoops, you're supposed to take away the debris from the tarps. What am I supposed to do? That's my question to the group.
Okay, those are your comments for this evening?
Those are, I think those are, and my only other, one more comment. This is for Paula. In the front left-hand side, there's four trees. I think one is, I think they're, I'm guessing they're all on Pittsburgh-owned property. And I didn't see them on the drawing, because I think the city owns them. But one of those trees is dead, but the other three are flourishing. And it's like, I would like to have them not be knocked down, because it'd be easier to construct something if you just take everything down. So that's...
All right, all right, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let her get through it, and then we'll, we'll talk about them. That's why we're building up all these questions, Dave, so we can do it all at once.
Yep. But that's, who do I call when no one here in this room is accountable anymore? Who do I, what do I do on the outside that they forget to sweep the street for months on end? Or who do, you know? Or they forget to put up the cedar fence?
The building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer. The building commissioner is the one who's in charge of enforcing our conditions. It's sometimes easy to contact both him and the planning office, Community Development Office, and say, I have this issue. And sometimes, Community Development and our planner can move things along, and sometimes it's the zoning enforcement officer, if it gets to that point, if it's a violation of a condition. So that's the answer to that question.
So I could call any of three people, and I might get an answer?
Some items fall to the building department?
Excuse me?
During construction, some items will fall to the building department. And what you're talking about in the street or about sweeping, that would fall to DPW.
There's some things that, historically, there's some things the city can do as, you know, a simple phone call to a developer saying, can you just do this? And they often do it. So that's the reason why I mentioned Community Development and our principal planner. And then there's a situation that might occur sometimes where permit conditions are violated. If they're severe enough, the building commissioner is in charge of enforcing the permit conditions. So I was giving you the simple nice way first, and the official hard-line answer is the zoning enforcement officer.
And can I call Chantel if I get confused?
She's our principal planner, so...
Okay. That's it for now. I'm glad they've taken some things up, and I'm glad that it'll be a single-family house, but I'd prefer it to be green space. But you know that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we do bring up the prior plan, just to look at the trees?
Yes, so if you want, I was just going to go through all those points one by one with the applicant, so we can just button them off.
Yes, that's why I bring up the plan, and we'll go through the...
Yep. So the first was, when will you install a fence? Can you install it before you start construction?
Fence up.
Perfect, perfect.
So prior would be like, prior to building permit? Yeah?
I can't hear you.
She said prior to building permit.
Can't get close enough.
I don't know if you need a permit for the fence.
Prior to pulling a building permit?
For the house.
You'd put the fence up, scenario. The property.
Hold on one second. I just want to make sure I have all these. So will they build what was promised, which is pretty straightforward? We're going to condition an approval on the plans that were provided and that it looks like the picture that was...
Well, let's go, the other aspect is adding the window to the side, as requested, if that's okay, because for the optional piece. The, we just, accountability, the trees, if you pull up the present conditions.
Hold on, existing conditions. Yeah, so these three right here?
Right. So those who need permission from the city to take those trees down.
Correct. The dead one's the one that's particularly in line with your driveway. Do they all get in the way of construction? No. Are you, are you leaving the two live ones? The 18...
Yes.
Oh, so you are going to, okay, that's easy then. Okay.
There is one other sheet, the existing condition one has grading on it. You have the addendum sheet that was up that shows it would upgrade, make it clearer.
So I have exist, oh, it's probably in the previous set.
No, it's in the, go to our set, don't go to the previous.
So...
Site Plan 8 Wilmont. After the addendum, you've got two of three, three of three.
Yep. Which one am I going to? So two of three and three of three are just drawings?
They're just details.
Yeah.
Oh, utility site plan, one right there. There.
Which one?
You can see the trees are still there with the driveway, if you go down the front.
Okay.
There's just a ton of, there's a ton of, all three of them stay.
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only, the only, yeah, that's fine. I was going to say, the only suggestion I would have is if the dead oak truly is dead, and, you know, you're there cutting trees down, if you ask the DPW, and the DPW says, please take it, take it. If they say leave it.
Is there a tree warden?
We do have a tree warden, yes.
Yes, we do.
And he should be contacted. He can verify it's dead.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
And say that it could be removed.
I won't even make it a permit condition, but it's just the type of thing, you're going to be taking trees. If it's dead, it might be close enough to your driveway where just get it out of there. But don't do it without talking to the tree warden. That's just a suggestion.
Before we go into, so then you brought up the, and was whether or not there's, if there's any other public comment out there, any other resident or a Butter regarding this project at this time?
I just, that, the aspect...
Just, can you just come up to the thing? Because no one can hear you that are virtual.
I asked that you address, I asked that you address that they want to put in a deed to prevent a critical water problem.
That is standard procedure, though, to record an deed, an O and M maintenance. That is for most projects, whether it's, whether it's a single family or whether it's a multi-family.
The reason why the new buyer has to do it is the city doesn't want to have responsibility for a private, private property on a private site, and developers can't keep ownership of something when they don't own the land.
Right.
So it conveys, the reason why we have them draw the O&M plans is that when someone buys the property, they're aware of their responsibilities.
So, and that there is something designed to mitigate the stormwater to begin with, so that, that if there is an issue, there is a recourse.
Okay. I assume they just didn't wanna get sued, that's all?
No, it's, it's pretty standard in order to mitigate stormwater, to have an O&M planned and have it recorded. Recording's important so that it does pass on, so it's not just, you know, put on a shelf somewhere, so that there is, there is a document somewhere that someone can, the butters and others can reference if there is a stormwater issue, that there is, there is a responsibility to mitigate it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
There's no one virtually that I can see.
All right.
Through the chair, if I could just clarify, it's actually stormwater, not just water. It's not, it's not the domestic water going into the house, it's the stormwater, and it was, I think that it was stated that it was the water. It's not the water piping, it's the stormwater piping. In case something happens, one of the structures collapses on property, it's gotta be fixed by the owner. I think that's really what the stormwater regs say. That's why it was included in the ONMs.
Thank you. So another aspect was the, there was a depiction, and I don't know that our online members can see the document.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll take a picture of it and I'll put it up on my screen.
The problem, the problem was the owner that owns this, she doesn't want the house be like online, so that's why I couldn't like, you know, upload those pictures. That's why, you know, that's a problem, so. But they can, you know, it's fine.
We need our other members to see the document.
Just bear with me for one second. Okay, there we go. So Alin and Alex, just so you can see what we were talking about.
Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
So this was proposed, as well as you saw online regarding the vertical relief that was proposed, whether, if there was any type of preference regarding the materials?
So let me just show, because again, Alin and Alex, I know you guys couldn't see what we were talking about, this, hold on, I'll pull up both of them. This was-
I mean, I see the difference, but it's the color-
So that was the first suggestion.
On portions of it, not the entire structure.
Right, right, I think we were talking about on the-
Right, the vertical.
On, on the gable areas, where these gable pitches are here.
I would say still think of a different color, other than that, it just all blends right in, but the difference, trying to use something to make it just look a little material-wise or color.
I think, I think that the shaker change is nice.
The shingles are fine, but if you change, maybe a different shade, I don't know, you know?
Funny, I liked the other one, but I liked this one so much better.
Like this one better?
Yeah, I mean, I liked the difference in the other one, and then when I saw this, I'm definitely-
It's better. Do you care about the color at all?
No, I, I, I like it all the same color personally.
All right, leave it alone.
I would say desire's choice, whatever you think looks good. As long as there's a change in material, I agree with you guys, you can go, opinions get, you start getting into opinions, it starts getting dicey.
We just wanna make sure it's like, so we'll say, stick to what's been submitted.
Yeah.
And, and we have apartment comments. We did get written comments from our DPW. I'm not sure of Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, Jeff, it's up to you, you don't have, I mean, I know you've spoken out length, you're welcome to speak if you want, don't feel like you have to. If you don't, I would just say that the concrete things, like that retaining wall that was mentioned, and some of the other concrete things that were mentioned in that letter, the department review letter that you got, we just condition on those things being satisfied.
And how long do you think construction would begin and would end?
We're gonna start in the next thirty days, and time-wise, it would be like four months? Four to five months, the latest.
So the fence will be up within thirty days?
I can do it anytime, you know, whenever you get permission for it, I can, you know, before I apply for the permit, we can install, and then, you know, it's gonna be a cedar fence, right?
Yeah, whatever she wants, yeah.
So I can do that anytime.
You don't even have to wait for a permit for that.
No, sorry, you can do, yeah, sorry, yeah, I can do anytime.
So regarding that just reported procedure, if the board votes in the affirmative, there is a twenty-day appeal period as well upon, so the decision has to be written, then filed with the clerk, and then over twenty days whether or not there's any appeal, and then it can be recorded.
So we have to wait the twenty days prior to install the fence?
That's just, you could do the fence, the fence, there is no, the special permit is not for a fence. The fence, you can put up on a vacant lot, that's not a, that's not a provision of-
If, if we vote on it tonight and we vote in the affirmative, you have to wait for the permit to be drawn up, to be written and signed, then filed with the clerk, then it's twenty days, then you can start construction on the house, well, pull permits.
Right.
The fence, like Paula was saying, if you wanna get a jumpstart on the fence, go for it. The other stuff, we'll have to wait till the permit's drawn and appealed.
You have to build, to pull a building permit, you have to-
And not appealed, I should think.
You have to have your special permit recorded.
Through the chair, it might be advisable that soon as the appeal period ends, the fence goes in at that moment.
That's up to you.
Yeah, we were just trying to, I don't know, it sounded like he was in a hurry to start, and that's what I was gonna say, but it's up to you guys. As long as it's done before construction, that's gonna be a permit condition. Yep.
All right, does the board have any, any comments?
If I could add one last comment, I wanna thank the engineering department for the review. I know that Jeff shortcha, you know, Jeff is the only one, he couldn't even meet with us, he was so busy reviewing projects, he was, he's the only one in the office right now. So we had reached out to try to review some of the jobs and other stuff, and he said he really didn't have time, but he got a nice review for us, so I just wanted to comment. And I appreciate all the work he's got going on in the city.
They did a very good job. Again, so, and board members, you would like, do you have enough information this evening?
Yep. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. That being said, there's a motion made to close the hearing with a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, discussion.
Yeah, so if you'd like, Paula, I can make a motion to approve Silva eight Wilmont Street, the single-family dwelling. I have a rather lengthy list of conditions that we had talked about. The, hold on, let me see if I can do these. Permit condition is that the dwelling stay a single-family in perpetuity, no future expansion in the driveway or create any other paved areas, installing of the cedar fence prior to construction or issuance of a building permit for the dwelling. I had continued fence along the RV property, but that's on the new site plan. Address DPW comments, that, the ones that came in, if there were any that, that were outstanding, you, you had mentioned the retaining wall, add that to the site plan, give us a revised site plan with that included, so that we can have the final completed site plan.
As built.
I had break-up front design material, but, so it's gonna be subject to design, something similar to the pictures presented with the vinyl siding and the vinyl shakes. To make every attempt to require your contractor to park on-site during construction, to, hold on, I gotta go to my next meeting minutes here. What's that, Paula?
Building elevations, as, as submitted.
Yep, yep, I just said that, yep. The window shown as optional facing the RV property on the design set to be installed, and I would say, you know, one-year completion date from issuance of building permit. Did you have anything else?
No, I think that was pretty thorough. Address the DPW comments, that should be prior to pulling a building permit, and as well as the-
Revised site plan.
Right, revised site plan and the installation of the fence. And, right, and as well as the no parking, well, that, the retaining, the retaining wall will help with the, right, no additional parking on the right-hand side, and maintain And if any trees, get permission, if there's any trees to be modified within the, or removed during, in the public way, you'd have to get city permission as well as any for curb cuts and all other activities. So anything, of course, on city property, you need permission. All right.
Let me just, one second, before you finalize that, let me just make-
We have recording of deed, a recording of the O&M and-
Oh, the, the other thing, I'm just gonna mention, this is very straightforward, it's actually written in the very beginning of the special permit, but when you get the special permit after the twenty days, record it in the registry of deeds, in recording the O&M, which is where I think you're going with that. But the permit itself, the special permit, has to be recorded. We have a lot of developers that just forget to do that, so I just wanted to mention it.
Paul, I think Jeff has his hand up.
What's that, Alex?
Jeff has his hand up. Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, I was just gonna add, so for the trees in the cities right away, James Bunting is our tree warden, so if the applicant just wants to reach out to DPW and request for him, he'll be able to assist with that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
I'm just, I'm just double-checking two meetings ago, I just gotta pull up my notes.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure I don't miss anything. Good, all this stuff in there, yeah, looks like all this stuff in there was, was satisfied. Yep, good. I think that was it.
All right.
Oh, that's in the form of a motion.
That being said, with those, with those conditions, I'm running the standard conditions about entry and completion and all the other aspects of that. Is there, Paul made a motion?
Second.
There is a second, and I'll take a roll call. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say opposed. Tracy?
Aye.
Peter? Oh, no, Peter. Alin?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. All right.
Chantel, I just sent you an email with those notes. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Old Princeton Road, I'm not sure if his bill Henningans around, and I'm looking for a continuance for next month.
Is this your project, Old Princeton?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because I have a question for you.
Sure.
We had said, and, and I don't know, maybe it just, I had mentioned a bill a few months ago, like, if you're still not sure, can you just ask us to give it leave-to-withdraw and then come back when you're ready, so that we don't have to drag this out every month and do a continuance?
Sure.
We're going on, what, five months now?
Yeah.
So next month, we will, we'll continue it today, next month, if you're still not sure, or if there's still things outstanding, just ask to give leave-to-withdraw.
Sure.
We'll give it leave-to-withdraw, you can come back, we can even, we can even vote as a board to waive the fee if you've already paid it, as long as it's not a new fee-
Sure.
-for the extra units, if, if you apply for the same thing. That way, we don't have to keep dragging people back here every month.
Sorry to do that.
But-
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's, I know there's a lot going on with that project, so I get it, but-
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Welcome. That being said, there is an item, I know it says extension, it's not extension of special permit, it's a special permit twenty nineteen dash nineteen for Final Touch Contractor LLC, Old Princeton Road, is continued from our April meeting, which was also continued in its, for a change of four to six units, and there's a request for continuance.
I'll make a motion to continue to our June meeting?
Okay.
Second.
All right, so there is a vote and a motion and a second to continue to our June meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? All right. All right, next, under our agenda this evening for a special permit in site plan review is Green Soul LLC, thirty-two Oak Hill Lane, for cannabis cultivation facility, continued from our April twenty-fifth, twenty-three meeting.
All right, so I know Sarah, and remind me again, Sarah, I just unmuted you, I got Brian raise his hand, Tanya, Mitch?
Tanya, there should be Rebecca Adams.
Yeah.
I don't know, Richard Harding or Shaka Ramsey or-
I already got that, and Shaka Ramsey. Okay, I think I got everyone, so now it's just up to you guys, whoever you wanna unmute. Now, Sarah, did you want me to put up what you emailed me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yep, no worries.
I learned from last time that you're sort of the, the controller of the, of the media, so I included you.
Better force. All right, let's see here, that's the wrong email address. Yours is under my other one.
I think we uploaded it too, to the-
Yeah, I got, I got it right here. All right, resume share.
Recording in progress. Thank you very much, so.
We had an echo, so just make sure only one person is unmuted at a time.
All right, how's that?
Good.
Okay, great. So I think what I wanna do is just scroll down to sort of the, you see the existing aerial view here, and then back up to the summary. What we tried to do, yep, right there, I'll, I'll let Tanya sort of go through the summary in terms of the, the architectural design, but you guys should have now a copy of the owner control plan, an overall operational plan, the buffer map that was requested, as well as the moral character and background information, forms for the three individuals associated with the license. And then, Tanya, if you are available, I will hand it over to you to just sort of walk through the, the architectural stuff, and then eventually to Brian with the engineering. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. Tanga Carrier from Culsa Design. So just a brief summary of our changes, we did pay close attention to all your comments in the last meeting. So the first change we made was we did add a new sidewalk along Fairmont Street for the entire building length, and you'll see that on the site plan. We did add fencing around the Fairmont Street West parking lot, and we changed it to a black-coated vinyl, or black-coated chain-link fence. And we did delete the fence line along the street, and instead added new landscaping, buffering that. We also added a new sidewalk, which is a partial sidewalk, then a designated walk area for employees accessing the main building entrance from the new lots that we added last time, Lot Three. And we revised some of the design of the Fairmont Street elevation. We located an emergency generator on-site where it can be held, and we changed the vehicle style, vehicle guard style on the Fairmont Street lot to a decorative black metal pipe. And we took another look at our mechanical system, now that we've reduced the size of the building, we were able to reduce the chiller count from three to two, so it would be a smaller area for the, the chillers. And we also reviewed the drainage with DPW. So just recap of our, our prior revisions, for anyone that wasn't here, we had removed the, the third floor from the Fairmont Street addition, and we removed Phase Two from the scope of this project and increased the parking. Next slide. So just to go over some of the changes I pointed out, there you can see the chillers reduced to two. Again, those are set down from Fairmont Street with the retaining wall buffering any effects of them from the residential area. And then up on Fairmont Street, the existing surface parking lots, you can see we've labeled new landscaping, and you'll see it in some of the renderings, and the fence is now just going along the, the back and sides. And for the access for Lot Three, the new parking, we added down, down low, just above that existing parking lot, we've shown a new sidewalk, you can see in dark black there, indicating for the employees to safely walk around the building. We, we thought it would be better for them to access through the main entrance, keeping one access point for the building. And Brian will go over that a little bit in more detail. And that's, the generator location is kind of the last change on here, you can see it's off of Oak Hill Lane, just left of the vendor shipping bay. So it'd be tucked in there on top of those four spaces when needed, which would not be all the time, so we wanted to keep it on that side of the building, away from the residential side. Next slide. And I'll, I'll turn over to Brian briefly to talk about the drainage coordination and the exact scope of the sidewalks.
Thank you, Tanya. For the record, Brian Goodrow with Hancock Associates. Yeah, so two key points, the sidewalk from the additional employee parking area, essentially what we did is we're proposing sidewalk in any place that we are able to. So if you look at the employee parking area to the left of the building, kind of goes down the loading entrance, and the sidewalk runs parallel to Oak Hill Lane, and then we have an elongated crosswalk basically, in front of where the transformer is, the secure parking area, and additional employee parking. And then after kind of some back and forth with DPW engineering, we originally had proposed kind of a painted striped crosswalk all the way across the face of the- kind of a painted striped crosswalk all the way across the face of the existing building to remain. And at the suggestion of DPW engineering, we took a second look at the area in front of the building to see if we could construct a sidewalk there, and we were able to do that. So now, we have sidewalks proposed across the front of the building with two curb cuts where the overhead shipping and receiving doors are, and that sidewalk then ties into kind of the main entrance and parking area. So, we do have safe pedestrian access from the proposed employee parking to the west of the building, all the way down Oak Hill Lane to the main entrance. The second kind of key point, if you would like to shift to the next slide, the next key point was the back and forth of the engineering about our drainage analysis, and just to kind of boil it down...
Brian, if you want, I mean, unless there's something big, obviously, we just assume that you do drainage to the satisfaction of our DPW.
That's, that's basically correct. So, now we...
Because none of us are going to know the technical aspects of drainage.
Okay, well then, with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Tanya to walk through the building to start changes.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Brian. You can head to the next slide. So, this is just a reminder, our ground floor plan, it really hasn't changed at all since we last showed you. We did just keep the singular employee entrance on, on the right side of the page here with the security desk, where that is located, so that we don't have to have two separate security areas and our security people at each door. And our second floor, just a reminder again, this is similar to the third floors as well. This has not changed either, so we have our flower rooms in the Fairmont Street side building, we have our mainly packaging, dry rooms and trim rooms, and offices in the mill besides our smaller R&amp;D flower room. And next. And the top floor, similar to below, except the mill doesn't have a floor at that level. So, here's our updated renderings. This view hasn't changed much, but you can see where those four cars are, just right of the brick building, that's where we're proposing our emergency generator to be located when needed. And so, on this facade, this one and the next one are the ones that we have adjusted, so instead of doing the mural on the residential main corner there, we went with more of a set design that we can kind of guarantee won't be up to the artist's interpretation, which is what sounded was desired. So, we did pull some of the same colors from that former scheme, and we went with a striped effect that wraps around, so you can go to the next slide. So here, you can see it wraps around the corner there, and we did break up the expanse of the long wall with different color blocking, similar to the corner. And we also have a kind of striated material, which further gives it further texture on that side versus a blank facade. And next. This is just the side showing the parking lots, again, I don't think this has changed since the last time. Next. And just a reminder of our sections set into the hill there, we are proposing to be on the existing foundation of that Fairmont building. So, here's our updated main view of the entrance, where you can see the updated corner design. And again, we've kept all the same features we've shown, as this rendering does show the kind of yellow striped walking area, but as Brian said, he had further conversations, which now we're allowed a full sidewalk there, so that'll be an improvement.
Yep.
The design, for sure. So, next. And just that corner view, how it'll be cohesive up that side, and break up with the different color blocking. And I think, one more. Here, you can see some, the upper parking lots on Fairmont, where we did change the fence, and add some landscaping in front. I didn't select exact trees, but we, we could do a variety of, you know, buffering trees there for the parking lot. So, I believe that's the last slide, so I can turn it back over to Sarah if she, if she wants to go over anything, or for questions.
Yeah, thanks, Tanya. No, I think, unless you have any specific questions about any of the other additional documents that were submitted, I'm happy to just take, take questions from the board.
Thank you for submitting the release documents, and the moral character documents, and the odor plan. Could you go over just the loading, the secure loading, is that to be interior, or is exterior and fenced?
Yes, if you can go back to the first floor plan, be helpful. Okay, so, I'll go over three loading areas we have, so on the first floor, we have the vendor shipping, which is interior space, and what you're putting, so just secure van, additional parking, but that one is fully interior. And then, we have a receiving bay on the opposite end, which is also fully interior space, right there, so those accommodate vans. And then, on the next slide...
Is that secure parking, when we mean, is there a gate, is there like a chain link fence around that area?
It would, it would be a gate, operable gate, yeah.
Okay.
And the next slide shows that's for trucks, we do have a loading bay on the left there, tucked up off of the loading access road.
So, it's a loading bay, it, let's see, that they're not pulled into?
Um...
Just saying about the security...
Well, we can make a general comment saying gate or fencing around all loading bays.
Correct.
If you're, if you're, if you have product, they have to be secured screened areas.
Okay. Yeah, and I would note too, that most of the product is actually, is delivered in Sprinter vans, so I would anticipate, you know, sort of the vendor shipping and loading dock receiving that you see there, that are the interior bays being the, that's where any products that were coming in or going out would, would go from.
So, it's, so it's safe to say, the, all of the product will, will, when it, when it's loaded into a van, it'll either be in gated or fenced in area, or within the building envelope?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Okay.
Just want to be clear on that, and then, you talked about, I know there was mention about employee access through this side, but did you alter that, and whether or not you talked with the police department regarding that, to their satisfaction?
Are they still, is everyone still coming in that main entrance, they're just walking around the building?
That's correct, so that, the plan's been altered, so there's no, there's no entrance on the left side anymore.
Because of the sidewalks and the crossheteria.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions from the board, I'll ask if Captain Lemay's...
Yeah, yeah, I saw Matt's on here. Matt, I don't know if you have something you want to put forward, you have, feel free.
Good evening, folks. At this point of the design, I don't have anything to add, I like the changes that I see, and I'll wait until this build out starts to take shape a little bit more before I comment further.
Yep. Yeah, and we'll maintain the same conditions we always do, that it's subject to the satisf, their, your satisfaction, FPD satisfaction of the final plans and security.
Thank you.
Thanks, Captain.
Thank you. Is there, oh, we do have a couple of, well...
No, they're all, those are all the applicants.
Okay.
They raised their hands when, unless Rebecca or Tanya have something extra to say.
All right, no, okay.
The hands go down.
Go down. Is there anybody from the public that like, has any comment regarding this project?
This is 32 Oak Hill Lane.
Yep, 32 Oak Hill Lane, for cannabis cultivation. All right, are there any board members, virtual?
No, I mean, all I want to say is, I'm, it's come a significant distance from when we started this. I had a lot of concerns when this, when this was originally proposed, and we had a lot of requests, and the applicant came back and really answered all of them. So, I'm glad this building is, needs repair like you wouldn't believe, so I'm glad to see that this is hopefully moving forward. The only question I have before we get to closing the hearing is, and Sarah, you're probably, I assume you're the best to answer this, what's, what's, we might have already talked about this, I might just forget, what's your anticipated timeline for, for finishing construction, and when you hope to have, you know, this project up and running?
Sure, so, in terms of, I can't speak to construction, but perhaps Tanya or Brian can, but in terms of licensure, you know, nowadays, we're seeing from some initial submission...
Oh, I'm not worried about the CCC, I'm just saying, construction to when you're ready to have plants in the ground, regardless of the CCC. How long is it going to take you to build out and be ready?
Do we have an estimate from, I'm not sure if we have one, because I'm not sure that, I mean, I'm sure, I think we're talking, you know, I don't know, I, I'm not a, I'm not a contractor.
Okay, so the reason why I asked that, Richard just had his hand raised, so he might have an answer to that. The reason why I ask is, we always have some sort of timeframe in the permit, understanding that, especially with the CCC, there's always issues with, you know, approvals from them and being up and running, but what I'd like to do is have a permit condition in there that, construction to be completed within two years of initial building permit, and then, if we get to that two-year period and you're not ready to run, you'll have to come back and just explain why you're not ready to, to be operating.
That's not a problem at all. I know these guys are, are looking forward to getting started, so certainly two years. I, I hope that we're going to be open within a year.
Yep.
Hey, can you confirm, there's no exterior extraction lab at this time planned?
I'm sorry, exterior?
Extraction.
Extraction.
Oh, like a product manufacturing?
So, they, they did have, yeah, they do have the bomb room right here, the...
Yeah.
Okay, that's the front.
Yeah. Yeah, right here. So, they do, yeah, so they do have a secondary building, just like One Oak Hill Road.
You know, extra, extra, you know, FPD requirements on that operation.
Yep. Did we forget any response from, from Fire?
We want to make sure that they sign off on that.
Do you know, did Fire have any comments?
I didn't get anything.
Okay, that's fine, we'll just, yeah, obviously...
I don't know if they initially...
It's fine, we'll, we have the standard permit condition that, 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 obviously, they'll have to satisfy Pittsburgh Police and Pittsburgh Fire with, you know, the, whatever the final design sets are. I'm sure Fire, sorry, but...
And the, yeah, and, you know, we do intend to apply for product manufacturing at this location, so, you know, can't, for extraction and things like that, so that is considered in, being considered.
All right. I think those are key things. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I just think it's a fantastic looking building. I think it's going to be a, you know, a great addition to the neighborhood, you know, and to the city, and I always just love it when a building that really is in need of repair and updating is refurbished like this, and I think it's a, it's a win-win situation. And I really am impressed with the, the design of the outside, I like the colored panels that are on the building a little better than I like the, the floral design that was presented last time. I think it's going to be a stunning looking building, happy to have it in town.
Very good. And I do appreciate everybody, like, was very intent on listening to the comments, and you addressed all of them, so, thank you for that.
Thank you all.
All right, anybody else need, now, does the board feel that they need any further information regarding this project at this time?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Has a motion been made with a second to close the hearing? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, discussion?
All right, so this is another one where I get to go back a couple meetings, so, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit in site plan for Greensoul LLC, 32 Oak Hill Lane, for cannabis cultivation facility, subject to, I guess I'll start with the new conditions, the most recently revised plan that was reviewed in our May meeting, along with the odor control plan that was provided, the new sidewalks, but they're all showing, the good news is, all my permit conditions are shown on the plan, the sidewalks, I was going to say concrete sidewalks, granite curbing, but it says the city standards on the plan, the fencing's on the plan, water, sewer, drainage, et cetera, to be satisfied, to, to be satisfied according to DPW review, which you guys have already handled almost all of those, if not all of those. Gating, gate fencing, or product transfer to be done within the building envelope, I suppose I could have said that right, to be gating or fencing around the loading bays, or product to be loaded within the building envelope. All employee access via the main entrance on the Oak Hill roadside, subject to Pittsburgh Police review of security plans and final layout, subject to Pittsburgh Fire review and satisfaction of plans, particularly, just as a note, like what Paula said, for the extraction facility. Black vinyl coated chain link fence, we got that. No, oh, permit condition that there be no dedicated backup generator, because we had asked, and they said they're not planning on having one. Show the portable generator location, which I think is on the plan, so you're going to have the plug-in, I guess the movable generator, for when you, when you have power issues, that there's not a constant on-off of generator. I did what we had talked about early on, which we didn't get too far into, but one of the conditions we talked about at the beginning was that the maximum number of employees per shift can never exceed a one-to-one for available parking, meaning you have to have one space for everyone working at any given time, can't exceed that amount. And there should be a good buffer there, because the parking was much more, I'm sure, per shift, because it was an overall. All the department letters were reviewed, but just address any outstanding department review letters that came in, I know they already have.
And just to be mindful too, there's conditions that are standard conditions, all within the ordinance, that will be cited in the permit.
Yeah, and that's it. I think that covers them all.
All right, that being said...
Second vent motion?
Is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, and I will take a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye, and I think Jeff has his hand up again.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Paula? Aye.
We can take it after the fact.
Thank you.
Jeff, did you have something you wanted to say?
Jeff?
He's, it looks like he's unmuted, but I don't hear anything.
Sorry, I had my headset muted.
Ah, okay. Anything?
I just wanted to remind the applicant that engineering still needs his flow counts for his water usage, so that we can figure out his permitting and connection fees, but engineering can work with the applicant's engineer to get that. I just wanted to remind everybody that we are still looking for that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Jeff, and I think that was a Brian thing, right? So.
Yeah.
Yep, just make sure you follow up on that for the, for their calcs.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right. And it has been approved.
Oh, good luck, guys. Oh, I didn't, I mentioned it, I did, the two-year, that was part of it.
Yes.
Because I mentioned it ahead of time, I just don't know if I mentioned it then. From issuance of building permit.
With the two years. And as you heard previously regarding special permits, that is going to be written, the document's written and signed, then it's filed with the city clerk's office and goes for a 20-day appeal period, and then you record it in the registry of deeds. The permit's not effective until you record it in the registry of deeds. After that time, then you can pull a building permit.
Best of luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Very good presentation. All right, continued. We have next a special permit in site plan review for a solar energy development at 140 Arnhow Farm Road, FHS, Pittsburgh High School.
Paula, if you want, I noticed John Barrett's back there, if you want to do Matt River quick, that should take 30 seconds.
It's not that quick.
Okay.
I'll just say, well, we got to do the stormwater piece, too.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
That's fine. Yeah, sorry.
140 Arnhow Farm Road, FHS, installation of three solar canopies over a portion of parking areas. Actually, do we have anybody here for that?
Jeff, was your hand, oh, yes, Jose, right? You are unmuted, and Jeff, I don't know if your hand was raised from before.
Hello?
I'll just lower your hand for now. Yep, it's all yours.
Hello, members of the board, I'm Jose Picharo, project manager with Greensil Environmental, representing the applicant. At this point, I would like to share my screen, please.
Yes, bear with me for one second. Okay, so you're a panelist now, so all you have to do is, on the tab there, just click the share screen button. She didn't tell me, it's send you the notes just that we talked about today, but you're going to have to get the rest from the meeting, because they were all over the place from three different meetings, so. These, the ones I sent you are just, just the ones we talked about tonight. Okay, perfect.
All right.
Whenever you're ready.
Be ready to go.
Can you hear me now?
We can, and we can see you, too.
Oh, wow.
Okay, perfect. So, project is located at Pittsburgh High School, prepared for select energy development in the city of Pittsburgh School District by Greensil Environmental. What you see here is an aerial photograph with site area one, the northwest, site area number two, to the northeast, right here. Also, you can see here, what I pointed out is the existing screening all around the property. The property is located on accessories map, 323 parcel one. The lot size is approximately 72 acres. So, in this, it's a resident. The proposed use is allowed by special permitting site plan review under the city ordinance. It is allowed by right under the Massachusetts general law. The proposed solar system will contain 1,472 panels for an overall production of 490 kilowatts AC. It's going to be mounted overhead on three steel frame canopies with a maximum height of 23 feet and a minimum clearance underneath of 14 feet. The superstructure will be supported by piers, 3 feet in diameter and 10 feet deep. The sections to, the section to the left is canopy number one and two, located at area one, that I previously showed. To the right is a section view for the canopy number three, located in site area two. The blue line that you can see here, canopy area one, it's the extent of the overhang, in the circles in blue symbols, those are the location of the footings within the parking. Or canopy number two, same thing, the blue is the extent of the overhang and footings, same type of symbols. For this portion of the parking lot, because of the location of this footing, we're going to have to re-strip slightly, just to ensure that the parking have the minimum width of nine foot. This will result on a smaller parking that will have to either be eliminated or repurposed, that could be utilized for maybe a bike rack or a motorcycle parking, small electric vehicle, like very small car, because it will not be, it will not have the nine by 18, but it's only on that portion. The red line represents the electrical trench to the building and across from canopy to canopy. We also have steel sack details that are called for all the cache basing and collection points within the parking area. We also show the erosion control wells that will be installed within the column areas prior to drilling for the footings, just a standard range paving details as well. Lumen seed for the areas that will have to be restored to pre-existing conditions, if applicable, just standard notes. This right here is site area number two, canopy number three, to be located at the center stall, similar to the other ones, the blue line represents the overhang of the structure and blue symbols, the location of the footings. This one is actually much more simpler than the other one. Red line trench, electrical trench across to the building, same details as before, applies for this one. Lighting over the canopy, within the canopy area will be mounted 15 feet, six inches high, and spaced 30 feet on center. The approximate amount, it's going to be a total of 20 units, seven located at parking area one and 13 at parking area two. Drainage, the existing conditions runoff with sheet flow over the pavement to low spots, collect by deep some cache basings and routed through pipes to the treatment and infiltration areas. That's basically what it does on the existing conditions, the proposed condition will be exactly the same. Runoff will drip through the half-inch separation gap that each model has all around, and then sheet flow, the exact same way that it happens on the existing conditions with no modification of watershed in contributing areas. For the drip zones that happens to be within previous areas, we will be installing a stone layer with filter fabric to provide long-term erosion and sedimentation control, and that was actually one of the comments from engineering, so we added that after the fact. And I was playing canopy area one, for example, we have a high point here in between the two canopies, so a drop of water will travel during the existing, on the existing conditions to the collection point, which is the cache basin. Exactly the same way will happen on the proposed conditions, water will go through the gaps, and it's the same analogy, exactly the same, because the grades are not going to be changing, surface materials will not be changing, curb numbers will not be modified. Same here, same high point, traveling to the collection point, cache basin. So, again, existing conditions will be exactly the same as proposed conditions. Erosion control, as I mentioned before, will be installing steel sack to all downgraded cache basings on site, instead of wells from column location prior to start drilling for foundation and downgrade along electrical trenches to prevent from going into the drainage system. Existing trees, no clearing is proposed for the project. Any high trees that are within the perimeter of the proposed canopy will be cut to grade as needed. Traffic impact, there is no anticipated increase in the daily trips generation, and any operation and maintenance trips will be scheduled outside of peak hours or during school, end of business hours. I added a couple of typical questions we always get on this type of project, and it's can the parking lot be repaved after installation of the solar canopy? And the answer is yes, with modern equipment and techniques, will be same as paving a low clearance parking garage or something like that, simply the pavement will be fit with a bogcat directly instead of using a dump truck. In, on tight areas, we'll use, can be used mini asphalt tracker paper in any tight spot with a smaller compactor, et cetera. Also, ice scoop formation and black ice under the canopy, that's a question that we always get, so I added that. All water, as I also explained, will drip through the separation gaps around the each panels, and tilt angle on the panels will also prevent for any water accumulation. Similarly, sunlight will bypass through these gaps and, you know, over the canopy, when the sun is not set directly above, will, sunlight will just bypass through it, since there are no walls, it's not an enclosed structure. Winter operation and maintenance protocols, you know, will have to continue for, to prevent slip and fall as usual, just like exists right now. If it's winter and too cold, and you have to spread de-icer, that still needs to happen. And that is my overall overview. Now I will turn back over and answer any questions that you may have.
Can you submit this presentation to the community development office?
Yes, I can, yep.
Yes, thank you. Since it's presented, we need to document that this is what was presented at the meeting.
Yes, absolutely, I can send that over to you.
Thank you. Are you ready for some questions?
I am ready for questions.
All right. I guess I'll, are there plans for any EV charging stations in any of area one or area two? Because that should be thought of, since the Commonwealth is looking towards, you know, no gas vehicles in 2035.
As of right now, I don't see any stations proposed. I don't know if we have anybody from Select here that could.
So I just bring that up as a comment, if that may be looking, should be looking to add some, at least a potential to add them, so you should facilitate and put in any underground controls to do that. Yes, Jeff?
Yes, board, I was just wondering if the applicant could reach out to engineering department? Couple of the items that he went over, we addressed, or we brought up in our comments, one being the site drainage with the proposed panels.
Yep.
So if the applicant could just reach out to us, so we could have a further discussion about that and a few other items that were brought up in our comments, we would appreciate that.
To bring, okay, we can bring them up, the comments, absolutely.
Well, yeah, he's just saying to reach out to them, because something's changed in this from their comments. So to re, re, rehab a discussion, a new discussion.
New discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to, if the applicant could just further, I guess, inquire with us? He had brought up about the drainage, and after I was looking at the plans now, with what he had on the plans, I'm not, I would like to have a further discussion with him about what, what the site would do with the, with the new addition of panels and where the stormwater runoff would end up.
Absolutely. I don't, I don't foresee this, I foresee this being continued, so.
Jose, does that make sense? Do you understand what?
Yes, however, all of his comments, we are okay to, you know, provide responses, formal responses. I don't see any one of them being a reason for continuation of the hearing, if you would.
Let's wait till you hear the rest of the comments.
Someone else, so Jose, do you know, there's a hand raised, Ken Lacorse, is he with you? Jose?
Ken, it works for Select, so I would like to say yes.
All right, so Ken, you're, I unmuted you, if you have something pertinent to say to this.
Thank you. No, at this point, I just kind of chimed in, at this point, we do not have any EV charges planned for this site, but we're still open for, you know, any decision from the board.
Okay, that's, I'm bringing that up as probably something that should be included, because it's forward-thinking, it's probably going to be necessary at some point.
I agree.
And since it's kind of be looking into degree of energy and solar, that kind of falls into the wheelhouse.
Yep.
So, other things, the canopy itself, see, at this site, site two right here, just seems to be off-centered from the parking, so you've got the tail end of the cars on the southerly side out, and it seems to be the canopy, nope, the other, site two there, yes. It doesn't seem to be centered over the parking, so you've got the first row of cars with the back ends past the canopy, and then you've got quite a bit of space going over into the aisle for the other row, the northern row.
Yes, that is correct. The only, the columns will be on the center stall, the canopy will overhang as it is shown.
Yeah, I'm just bringing out that the canopy doesn't seem to be, like, for the intent of, like, also serving as going over, like, carports, it doesn't seem to cover the car. Why could it be shifted? What's the purpose?
The purpose of the canopy, it's to support the panels, that's the main purpose.
I understand the purpose of the canopy, the purpose of why it has, why you have it located where it is, could it be shifted a little bit to the south, so that it's evenly spaced over the vehicles?
Yeah, so absolutely, Jose, I could actually answer that. We could absolutely shift that a little, a little further south to cover the back part of that. This is just a preliminary design, just to make sure, you know, just to show you what we're proposing.
Okay, so.
However, the location of the columns will have to stay the same, so I guess what he's saying is, it could, the size of the canopy could be increased, maybe, the location of the columns will remain as is.
Yep, yep, Jose's absolutely right. The column will remain the same, whether or not we push it a little south with the, with the mods, with the modules, you know, we could work with the design team for that.
Okay, so another, very larger aspect is the trees, there are about like approximately eight of them, as well as the light posts. You're going to be removing landscaping islands, pretty much, because the canopy's going to be encompassing all of them in this parking lot, that's in the middle aisle at this point. There is a provision in the ordinance regarding landscaping of parking, so areas with more than 10 spaces shall contain 150 square feet of planted areas for every thousand square feet of parking proposed, including aisles. So if there are planned to be trees and all this landscaping to be removed, it's, something needs to be done with those landscape islands, if you just cut the trees out and then it's just left as dead space underneath the canopy, something needs to be replaced in those areas, as well as probably maybe relocate or plant some new trees along the perimeter of the school, relocate some of the landscaping, not just eliminate the landscaping.
Okay, understood. We did have some notes about that on the plans. Any trees to be removed within the canopy area should be compensated within the, in new plant, that's strategically, in coordination with this, with the order. new plantings, that's strategically in coordination with this, with the order in the school.
That's good.
Yes, this is true, but now you still have dead landscaped islands within, under the canopy, so what's to be done with those or should those be turned into parking spaces? Since it's not going to see the light of day for the most part.
Yeah, how would you handle that? So you have landscaped islands with plantings and trees that'll die under the panels. What do you turn them into?
We could potentially put grass areas in there.
But won't grass, won't grass grow with no light?
We would.
It will, it will have some light though. Light will penetrate just like, like the runoff between the gaps, so it will have some light.
So what about any type of plantings that are, I guess, shade tolerant and any, like, you're talking about drip line to ensure that they receive enough water to sustain vegetation underneath the canopy?
Okay, so we'll look into it and provide a reading response. Is it possible that you can provide those comments we're talking about now? Because I didn't see those on the submittal, the peer review.
What's that?
If you can submit those as well, just like, just like you did with the DPW comments.
If I can submit them as detailed comments, you should, please, I would just, I would recommend you write them down.
You can re-watch the meeting, too.
Watch the meeting as well, we will have that.
Okay, yeah, that works.
And then, and specifically, there's even more vegetation now after leaving this area, going back to the first area. There's an enormous amount of vegetation that's going to be covered over there and a lot of trees, even more trees. So I really like, like to know what the plan is for that because right there, actually, Paul, will you put your hand right there, right?
That's not me.
Okay, right, right, that area is, is all like arborvitae on an embankment, it's a large embankment, so that's also going to be covered, covered by the canopy.
So let's take a look, let's take a look real quick at how the section, section looks like. So light will come right through it. This is, this is, where those plantings are, the light will come. No questions about it, they will receive some light, we will respond to that.
So, so, so you believe they, you believe they'll survive and flourish there regardless?
A hundred percent, because how do they survive here near the building?
Okay.
You know, all these are here and they survive.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is nothing, that landscaping area is staying exactly the way it is?
But it can't because there's also trees.
The trees will be cut, like I mentioned, the trees will be cut to gray, but everything else should survive.
I would also say if you cut any trees, hopefully remove the stump as well.
Yeah, you don't want.
Not leaving any stumps, it's not just cutting the tree and leaving a stump. And additionally, there's trees along the back line, along the driveway, along the wraparound driveway to the, to the other side, to the north side. There's a number of trees right along the drip line or right around the canopy, a little further to the north.
Yeah, the north, the north is an elevated area, so we wouldn't have to worry too much about those trees. That's elevated above the lower canopy.
No, to the, I mean, they're right going into the canopy, at least, at least the ones towards the left as well, to the other side, to the left, I guess my left, yes. Whether or not, because they'll probably hit into your canopy.
So those are staying, is that what you're trying to say, Ken and Jose?
I think you need to identify what's going and what's staying.
Yeah, if you look at the grid lines, you gotta, you gotta, what am I looking at here? 734, 736, so that's a higher elevation. So if anything, those trees would just be trimmed, but they would have to stay.
I, yes, I'd like to see on the plan which is staying, designate what's staying and what's going.
Okay, we can totally do that.
And then when we talk about like enhanced landscaping, there's our landscaping islands along the aisles where you see the staircases that need some help, I would say to relandscape Yep, so wherever they are in that parking lot, there's the north ones and then the south ones as well as to the.
So basically, you're looking to have a landscape plan, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yes, correct, because it's kind of like you're cutting and altering some landscaping. We like to see the enhancements where and improve, maybe even improvements of existing landscaping spots.
Given that it's a requirement, when you revise or create parking plans, it, it makes sense to show us kind of what it's going to look like after it's done.
Okay, I would have that ready for you if I knew.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you, honestly, if you were leaving all the trees and landscape areas the way they were, it wouldn't be a problem.
That's okay, we'll do, we'll do. That's not, not an issue.
Yep, yeah, so there's multiple areas where that could be enhanced, see when you're out in the site.
Do you have more?
Well, there was just the other DPW comment of any of the next set of plans should have a PE stamp on them as well.
Yes, we will provide that. That's absolutely a point well taken.
So I had a couple, how long is anticipated construction from start to finish?
Ken, I'll let you answer that.
Yeah, we're looking probably about anywhere between four to six months, depending on supply chain issues.
Okay, so if we make a, you know, like a 12-month estimated construction duration, that should be sufficient?
That should be sufficient, providing, obviously, we put a disclaimer.
Yeah, I mean, if there's anything that comes up that you're not aware of, you can always come back. It's just, you gotta set some sort of timeframe for all these things.
Yeah, well, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Like I said, between, like I said, 12 months is fine, but we just have to have a little, you know, a little caveat, same supply chain issues.
Yep, yep, no worries. It's always, so the permit conditions, you can always come back and request an extension if there's some extenuating circumstance. What's the net reduction in spaces? Is it just one space or is it more than one?
No, just one.
Just one space.
And like I said, it could be repurposed, you know, just.
Yeah, right, right.
Or a golf cart for maintenance, whatever.
Yeah, and this question is more of a, not tied to, to any decision we make, just a curiosity question. Are the ownership, the ownership of the panels going to be fit for public schools or are they leased panels?
I believe this is a PPA for Pittsburgh.
Okay. So, so you must not have any clue about how much of the energy generation is going to be applied to City of Pittsburgh or savings or any of that information?
I do not, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay.
I believe a good portion of this is going back towards Pittsburgh, but I don't want to speak out of, out of turn.
Yeah, that would be helpful information. And also, what color are the canopies?
They're actually just, they're, they're galvanized steel.
What's that?
Galvanized steel.
They're galvanized.
Correct, is anything painted?
Nope, nobody requested any painting.
Okay.
Something like that.
Yep, absolutely, something like that. They actually, they're, they're pretty attractive. We did Framingham Brophy School, looks, looks really nice.
I have, I have a little bit of a question to satisfy my curiosity that goes along with pretty much what the vice chair has just said. I'm a little curious as to how this whole project developed, how the whole concept came about. Did your company actually approach the City of Pittsburgh and FHS and ask to put a, on a solar array over the parking lot? Or did the city and FHS approach you and ask to put a solar array over the parking lot?
To be honest with you.
And the last question I would have is who stands to benefit the most from this project? Is it the City of Pittsburgh? Is it the high school? Is all that electricity that's going to be generated going to the high school? How does your company stand to benefit from this project?
To be honest with you, I cannot answer that question. I am not the, the point person that was with the school on that, I'm just part of the development team.
Those are kind of important questions that I think we need to, need to have answered. For example, how long is it going to take the city, if they own these panels, to pay back the cost of putting them up?
What he was saying was, he, he, he's under the impression it's a PPA, which is a power purchase agreement.
Who's that, who's that?
What he said to me when I asked him that question, he said, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that it was his interpretation that he thinks it's a PPA. A PPA is a power purchase agreement, which is basically a lease. So someone else owns the panels, the City of Pittsburgh or the school, most likely the school committee, the school department gets some savings and the company that owns the panels gets some savings.
How is that broken down?
So we will provide a response to that if it is important to you.
It is, yes.
Just to, just to not leave it up in the air, I'm going to give you an idea of how this works based on other projects, not necessarily exactly for this project. But the way it works is the school will purchase the electricity that is generated at a lower cost. In other projects, the panels produce around 65 to 70% of the total usage. So that's the general overview. For other projects we have done, we will provide the actual data for you as a response.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member have any questions? I'll bring that up to the public.
Jeff has a hand raised.
All right, Jeff?
Yes, Board. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
So the applicant did mention one thing about the foundation pillars are basically defined as they are where on the plan. One comment Engineering had was that one of the proposed pillars is actually within 10 feet of our, I believe it's our drainage infrastructure. And additionally, if I remember correctly, it's been a while since I looked at these plans, I think it also, there's also a pillar that's near our, one of our water mains, so, or water services for the area. So if, in fact, the pillars are defined as is in the locations and can't move, would the applicant be open to relay some drainage pipe and/or, or relay whatever utilities to make sure that there's adequate amount of linear distance away from, or the pillars away from our utilities so that there's no undermining or damage or, and whatnot? So I guess.
That is correct. So I have, the, the location of the piles will be as shown. I would like to add that this is not excavation, it's going to be drilling. What we did for the parking lot is we hired a ground penetrating raider company prior to the boarding halls for soils that we already did. And we have the exact location of that drain line, so it will not be an issue.
So yeah, so we can't, we won't permit any, any structure within 10 feet linear distance of our utilities, so we'd have to look at relocating those utilities if that's the case.
So you require 10 feet and that, that's based on, because I understand if it is an excavation for a foundation.
All right, we'll tell you what, because this is a negotiation between you guys, handle this outside the meeting because it, it's not something that can be negotiated now.
It's a valid point, so we need to, that to be addressed in the new, in the revised plan about where, where you're going to either relocate the, the pillars or, or utilities will have to be relocated at your expense.
Okay, so I would reach out to Jeff on that.
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
So thank you for bringing that up, Jeff, about the pillar location. Similarly, again, like even shifting the, the pillars, well, the canopy to actually cover all the cars, if that's the case. Might even look at restriping, that's what's underneath there as well.
Do you know, and this is more of, I'm never up there during the day, do you know as far as demand for parking there? If this construction, because of your timeframe, has to spill into the school year regardless of when you do it, how, how you can work around the demand? Is there enough spaces aside from where you're working to make sure all the parking still stays on the high school property?
So I could answer that, Jose. What we're trying to do is we're trying to work this outside of the school year, so when they're on, on vacation, so we're going to have to phase this, this project out.
Okay.
So, like you said, four to six months, I mean, you only have a two and a half month summer, so, not even, two, really, two full months, basically. So how does that work? You do two months this summer, one month and, you know, a week and?
Yeah, when I, when I say four to six months, I also mean permitting and trying to get everything involved as well as steel order and ad lib. So not actual construction. So once we get this, get it all approved and everything is signed, and then we'll put a schedule together and submit to the town.
So it seems like that we're already in June, basically, so this must be next summer you're planning for?
I'm thinking this is probably going to be late, yeah, late this year, by the time we get all the development end of it going, and then 2024.
So construction, so to answer the question, I'm just trying to clarify, construction's not going to happen while students and staff are there full-time?
That's what we're working towards, yes.
And just to satisfy that a little more, I will look into the data, the parking data and the actual use as well, as, just to have it as an alternative.
Okay. Board members, questions, further comments, the materials you'd like to see?
I'll set.
I'll set, okay. And online, Alin and Alex?
I think everything's been covered that we need for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, same.
All right.
I mean, I think generally speaking, you know, the, the project, if, if the school committee, I assume they've already vetted it in the school department, I assume it makes sense, just, you know, crossing Ts and dotting Is, you're going to have to solidify those comments, the stuff that Paula had and particularly Jeff's comments, to, to make sure that what we see on the site plan is what's actually going to get constructed, especially if that, that's going to shift and then you're going to have landscaping on there, plus if any of those columns need to move away from utilities, show all that and get that solidified.
Will do.
All right. Any, is there any, anyone else in the public want to comment on this? Do you want to comment on this? Yep, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name's Paul Ignisi, Teresa Street. I'd like to just mention that is the cost of construction part of the PPA? So my, my question is, does Pittsburgh burden the cost of construction?
It's a good question. Do you, Ken, do you know the answer to that or Jose?
As far as I know, no, but I can follow up and I can definitely reply.
Yeah, part of, you know, what the, maybe the general terms of the PPA like, like Peter and I were talking about, as well as my, my presumption is that the, the solar company is paying for it, but.
Right, but this is not putting panels on a house roof, this is major construction to install it. So my concern is, or question is, we burden the cost of construction?
We'll get the answer, we'll definitely find out.
And I agree with Peter's comment about an assessment of where the cost savings and how much that's going to be over periods of time. Now, I'm assuming the PPA allows the panels for a lifetime, is that the case here? Lifetime, lifetime of what, the school, what, so?
Just, just to be clear, because I, I opened the can of worms and Peter mentioned it, this is, this is an FYI for the board. The board's decision is not based on, is this good for the school, the school department? The school department made that decision, not the planning board. This isn't, that's, just like we can't say, is a commercial project going to be viable, that's not in the purview necessarily of the planning board. So it's, it's good to know and I want to know these answers, but that's, that's not going to be part of the final decision.
We'll provide, we'll provide that for you, for sure.
Actually, I actually just called, I just called a rep, I just called a rep for, from Select that's handling this project, and Select will be burdening all the costs for this project.
So Select, so, okay, so, so they're paying for it and then sell, basically we're buying the power off of them at a reduced rate.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We have the first answer.
Try to make it as quick as possible.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Any further comments at this time? All right, that being said, we'll look, seek to continue this to our June meeting, which is, what's our June date?
I think it's the 27th.
The 27th.
Yep. Make a motion, continue to June 27th.
Okay. Motion's been made to June 27th. Motion's been made to June 27th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
My suggestion to the applicant, Jose and Ken, you know, if we want things to go smoothly next week, have whatever revisions you make at, at a minimum two weeks before our next meeting. So that gives you two and a half weeks or so to get everything together. Send it to planning, the community development and the DPW so that everyone has enough time to review what they need to review.
And get back to you, and potentially get back to you if there's more engineering questions and concerns that you can address before the next hearing.
Yep.
Okay, we'll absolutely do that for you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, that one's continued. We have our major site plan review of Fuller, 44 Ronald Street, conversion of residential dwelling into daycare center.
Where would you like me?
Well, you can either sit there and use the microphones there, or you can stand at
All right, let me, I can pull up what we have here. Bear with me for one second. Probably the site plan, I would guess, you guys want?
So, yeah, we have, we're up for site plan approval. As you probably know, that the use of the property as a childcare facility is a right. So we're here just for the approval to make sure we're meeting all the city ordinances that are required.
Yes, this is a major site plan review, as you, as you mentioned, it is an exempt use, so it's allowed in any much, any district, but it has to comply with site plan requirements and those zoning ordinance.
Correct, yep. Which I think we've done. So the property was originally, this is Mr. Cordio, he's, he is, he's going to be the contractor on the site. He also currently owns the property, but at the end of the project, I will purchase the property. I will be the full-time owner and operator on site for the daycare center. So he had bought the property before I met him and he had already been approved to add the second floor. So that, that building permit is still out. And Ken, Mr. Barbadoro said we could do work off of that permit. However, we're kinda waiting to make sure the site plan is approved and we're all set before we do any more interior work to the property. So I've come in after the second floor has been added. I've not really changing the exterior of the building itself. It will look like a home, aside from the fact that we need to add a handicapped ramp in the front. You will see that outside the handicapped ramp, those are planters there to add some curb, you know, some, add some greenery back, those there. Perennials, whatever, actually probably will end up being a project that we do with the children that are enrolled in the childcare center, because we hope that they will be part of the neighborhood. And, you know, that's the whole reason, kind of why we're doing this, which I can go back in a minute. So we're really not changing the outside of the building. I know the biggest hot button issue, I know that a lot of the neighbors are here. I think you might have seen in my proposal as well that I did hold an open house for the neighbors to come and speak with me about the project and ask any questions. A couple of them did take advantage of that. So I know that the biggest issue is the parking. We do have, this is actually the second parking plan we came up with, which I have thought really hard about this. I just wanted to take a minute to tell you why I'm doing this and why I selected a neighborhood. Two things, I've been doing childcare for 25 years. I hold a master's degree in early childhood education. I work with children with disabilities under the age of three. I have four children of my own, two of which have disabilities as well. My 16-year-old was kicked out of several preschool programs because they couldn't meet his needs. So this is a true passion, this is just not somebody crazy dropping into the neighborhood and opening a childcare center. I selected a residential neighborhood, especially in the city of Pittsburgh, because I want families and children to come to a place where they feel safe. And commercial properties don't always provide that same kind of feel. So it was strategic. I understand that it's not ideal for some folks, but I, I also am very respectful. I'm a professional individual and I, I hope that we can work with the neighbors. So with the parking, like I said, this was our second plan, because our first plan was basically taking the whole front of the property, making it blacktop, and we could get 10 spots there. I don't wanna do that. I don't want my daycare center to look like that, because again, going back to, I want it to have a homey feel when people pull up to it each morning. I didn't wanna do that. I did not think the neighbors would think that was favorable either. Nobody wants to live next to a blacktop. So what we've done is, because we do need to have the, the handicapped, we have, that section does need to remain, originally we were gonna do all gravel, just because I thought it would look more appeasing than having the whole thing blacktop. But obviously, you can't put handicapped on black, it has to be on a paved surface. So the handicap spot, as well as the crosshatch and the parking lot on the other side of the crosshatch are all paved. The rest of it is a crushed stone. I know there's some question over how many staff we need to have. Each classroom needs to have two staff in it at all times. That is state ratio, that is the bottom line. So, so although the program is open from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, the staff rotate in and they rotate out to cover the entire day. You don't need more than six people at the program at one time. So I know there's some question over whether or not you can run a program with that amount of staff, but I assure you, you can. So the staff, what we've done is taken the left hand and we've kind of, what we're asking for is allowing the staff to stack park on the left-hand side of the property, which would allow for six staff members in the back. There would be a parking policy written by myself as the owner stating that those people can only back into the spot, and there would be a very systematic way of who parks where so that I ensure that staff can get in and out as well. That also being said, so that leaves the, you know, the one, two, three, four there for staff, child drop-off and pickup. Keeping in mind, the last two staff spots are oftentimes going, because our core of our day is the only time, and that was in the explanation, between nine and about 3:30 is the time that you will have that whole six staff there. Outside of those hours, you sometime, you will sometimes only have two. When the program opens at seven o'clock in the morning, there's only one. And then you don't get the, and that's in the explanation. So those two spots, the high drop-off times, are usually between eight and nine, and again, between four and five. Those two last staff parking spots will actually be open as additional drop-off pickup spots because there won't be that number of staff there. The architect, when we did the drawing as well in front of the building, there is nine feet, I believe it is, between the actual street and our parking spots. So that does actually leave some space for coming and going as well. So the parking spots don't like start right at the end of the property. I, I'm not sure what else you want me to review. The snow storage is in the back behind all the parking spots there. That is what, unlabeled on the drawing, it's the infant toddler outdoor space. As you might imagine, infants and toddlers don't go out much outside because they barely can walk in the wintertime. If we had, if we wanted to go outside, they can use the preschool space as long as the preschool children are not on it at the same time. So you alternate the outdoor time if we did wanna take them out in the wintertime. So the snow storage would be there in that area. In regards to outdoor lighting, it'll be no different than what a home would have. And I don't know, I think I put some samples of that in the proposal as well.
I did have one question, just about the snow storage. You have concrete wheel stops at the end of those parking aisles? How are you gonna get to the snow storage?
They're gonna be removable type, so that they can be removed in the wintertime. Also, we had a wheel stop in front of that, right where that triangle is, and I think it was because the architect had to remove it. If you go in front of the garage, there was a wheel stop there. Obviously, we can't put a wheel stop there because then you can't off-access your garage. So what we'll do there is we'll put up some kind of, you know, cones or some kind of marking for where, where the parking spot should stop for folks.
So your maximum employee at any one time is six?
Yes.
And 36 children is the anticipated?
Yes, I have for the, for the count, 12 spaces are required, 10 spaces proposed with one garage space. However, I know it, just so you looked at 11, but it's actually 12 because you're also considered a non-resident employee, so you've gotta be counted in that mix.
Nobody told me that during the process.
It's not a resident of the city, it's a resident of whether or not you're residing in the, in the house. Because it's made for, provision is also for a childcare facility where someone's home as a resident, so you'd be a non-resident.
I ran one of those for seven years.
Okay, so just saying that it's actually 12 spaces.
All right, that was not, I didn't know that.
So, and then just some, the observations, because you're looking for, I mean, there's a lot going on here, but I'm gonna pull up parts of the zoning ordinance. The maximum curb cut allowed is 36 feet. You're proposing a curb cut of 52 feet. Backing onto a street is prohibited except for single, two and three family residences. So backing out. Stack parking is allowed for one and two-family residential buildings, but again, the proposed use isn't residential. Residential garage of at least 11 by 21 feet may be used to satisfy parking for a residential dwelling, but again, it's not a proposed use for a residential dwelling. You addressed the snow storage aspect, because that was a question of how you were gonna get behind a gate and a concrete curb stops for snow storage. There needs to be a landscaping buffer strip is required between parking lot and the rear indoor side lot lines between residential and non-residential uses.
Okay, I, I think that for the, I think that the buffer, I think...
Well, you have the rear, but between the parking lot, so the side buffer on the side would be, it's a minimum of 10 feet plus one foot, one foot for each space in excess of 10 spaces, so like 12 feet.
Okay.
And the landscaping of street frontage is required for non-residential uses must be at least 20 foot in width, saying in depth, like typically, otherwise you're seeking a waiver for that too. And parking areas shall be surfaced with non-dusting paving, so in your proposing crushed stone, so that's another aspect of, typically that's why it's paved, it's for also keeping dust out and any other, you know, the pebble, everything in check. So just wanted to bring out, those are the provisions, the ordinance, that we also be looking at for the site plan. That the board can, because you're seeking some waivers, is that any parking requirement may be reduced or waived with the issuance of a special permit by the special permit granting authority or condition of site plan approval upon a finding that the reduction is not deleterious with public health and safety, or that the reduction promotes a public benefit. And they provide some cases.
Because what my alternative could be, and I don't wanna do this, so one of our parking was to take the whole front and cut it. Our other alternative, what we looked at, and I spoke with engineering department about, because it was one of their comments, was what I had really wanted to do was parallel in that area as opposed to stacked, but I couldn't get to the number. So then I'd be looking for a reduction in parking and then possibly needing to use on-street parking, which I'm really trying really hard not to do. I'm open to what folks would think would be best.
Well, this is the site plan, so you technically need to show 12 parking spaces on that. There you can facilitate on that site, site with a limit of 36 feet width, 10-foot buffers on the side and try to fit everything.
Okay, well, those numbers came from Mr. Barbadoro, so I was not informed.
It's the zoning ordinance, so that's what I'm reading it from.
I wonder if Mark was including the garage?
Could have been, but the garage is for only residential uses and it has to be a specific width and depth as well in order to be used for that, but it's for residential.
How big is the garage, do we know?
I believe it's 12 by 22, if I'm not mistaken.
It gotta be interior, not the exterior, so it's interior wall-to-wall.
Interior wall-to-wall, correct, yes. Yep, eight-foot-seven door, interior wall-to-wall, 12 by 22.
So as it is on the plan, the parking that you're saying for your employees is not gonna be paved, it's gonna be crushed stone? That's what we had thought. We can pave it. We can pave it if people would prefer.
That's what they had recommended through both Chris Para, the, the surveyor and Bill Lorgan, the architect. They said, you know, to keep, a lot of people don't wanna pave paradise, I guess, essentially, you know, have the whole yard paved, so it would be a better look, essentially, to not have all that pavement in the front of the house.
I understand, we are working with what you've chosen, so this is, this is a tight site, so you're gonna have to take a look at that, whether or not you can actually accommodate this on the site.
The biggest issue, and I'm sure, particularly, obviously, I'm sure there's public comment, but the biggest thing that, that I have trouble getting around and we're very cognizant of for a lot of site plans is backing out onto the street. Code does not allow you to back out onto the street unless it's a single family or two to three family. And, and that's particularly in a situation where you're gonna have people coming and going, you know, you have 36 kids coming, you have, you know, three or four cars at a time that can pull in, they're gonna be constantly backing out into the street, and that's, that's a problematic, that's a problematic condition of the site. And quite honestly, I don't know what the remedy is.
So that being said, we're gonna take some public comment. We know there's a lot of public here, I think that wants to take some, that wants to provide some comments. So I'm gonna ask each individual, you come up to the podium and please state your name and address and, and your comment. And please direct your comments to the board, that's fine.
Sure, I'm Anne Snow, I live at 54 Ronald Street, we're the butter right next door.
When you're looking at it, left side or right side?
Left. I'm sorry, right.
Right side.
Yep.
No problem, I'm just, just trying to get bearings.
I've lived at 54 Ronald Street for basically all of my 32 years. I've known all of my neighbors for 32 years. Has anybody ever driven down Ronald Street? Have you guys ever gone down Ronald Street? Okay, has anybody gone down in the winter? It's fun, huh? I mean, do I have to say more? I love my city, I don't wanna move, I'm gonna inherit my house. I did not plan on living next to a daycare center, no disrespect. She's not a resident, she lives in Gardner, she live, I mean, why, we've all lived here for 30-plus years, some people have lived here for longer. Why are we now gonna be pushed out? Because a lot of people have said they will leave the city. We have a hard enough time getting people to live here and stay here, and now people are going to leave. I mean, I'm in your demographic, you want me to stay here, you want me to work here. My property value is not gonna go up with a daycare center. There are little children across the street from this daycare center. They run around their yard free. Their parents don't have, he's here, Ben. He doesn't have to worry about his children. He can let them run around, they're tiny, they're fine. Now we're gonna have to worry about people backing out and backing in. I leave for work around 8:00. I come home at 5:00 PM. My driveway is right where these other parking spaces are gonna be. When, Chris, no disrespect, when Chris was building the house, we had people stopping and parking in the driveway and parking in front of the driveway, and my father had to ask them to move constantly. This is going to be a problem. These people are not just going to come in and park in your designated area and then go and drive away. They're going to park in front of wherever they wanna park so that they can let their kids out. And there are no sidewalks, there are no stop signs on either of the sides of the street. Ronald Street is a tertiary street. We don't have stop signs, we only have a stop sign when you go down towards Teresa or if you go at the end of Shea. There are no stop signs, there are no sidewalks. She said in her little, in her plan here, she said that she was gonna have no buses or anything was going to come, that her staff was gonna go greet these children at the bus stop and walk them down. Or I assume walk, I don't know. Or I assume walk, I don't know if they're going to go pick them up or something, but where are you going to walk, there's no sidewalk. I'm just confused and concerned, and there's a lot of elderly people that live in our neighborhood that can't be here tonight, and they also have concerns. And I'm just trying to look out for everybody in our neighborhood, because I'm getting emotional. I really love it here, and I'm begging you, please, this is going to ruin our neighborhood. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just love where I live.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name's Andrea Turigny, I live at twenty-six Ronald Street. We are two houses to the left of the establishment inside, and I've been there a little less than everyone, everyone here, but as Ms. Snow said, we love our neighborhood, and we're trying to really, you know, make it a beautiful place, it's a quiet neighborhood. Concerns I have about this is our street, as Ms. Snow commented on, when you first turn on to Ronald Street from Teresa, I mean, I'm sorry, from Shea Street, there are some huge craters in the ground, right in the middle of the road that we have to go around to get onto our street. We don't complain about it. We hope that eventually they will be patched again because that's what they do. But in the meantime, if we bring a business in on top of this, it increases the traffic flow. Franklin Road is a hot mess, we all know it, it's not, it's not a secret, there's more traffic flow coming in. That's one of my biggest concerns, because it's a quiet neighborhood, and we do have young children that do live in the neighborhood. They don't go running amok the streets, they are contained in their yards, but things can happen. My other concern is talking about the, maybe putting in, in the front yard some driveway or parking area at that house, or business, I should say. We just talked about, you know, keeping it aesthetically correct to make it look like it's not a business, that it looks like a home, like all the other homes. Cutting into the front of it to make it a parking area or parking spot or whatever it is, is now taking away from the aesthetics that we just, were spoken about, about how we wanted to keep it like a neighborhood. So that's another concern. I think that was really all I had for, um, my most, my major concerns, was trying to keep it a nice, quiet neighborhood. And the work that needs to be done just in our neighborhood along, alone with paving or even like fixing some of these holes is way more important right now because I feel like this traffic flow is going to really, you know, make the dynamics of our neighborhood and our streets worse. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Melissa Dustletts, I live on twenty-five Ronald Street, I'm right across from Andrea, I'm two houses to the left across the street. Not only am I a resident of Pittsburgh, I'm also a special education teacher for the city in the public schools. I also hold my lead preschool teacher certification for the state of Massachusetts. So I know what it's like to work in a preschool program. I also have my own little preschooler who had to tag along tonight to help out. But I'm speaking to you for the kids. I have my own preschooler, we have two older ones, we have little ones that live directly across the street from the building. The flow of traffic on Ronald already is very, very heavy. The kids, the weather is getting nicer, they love to be outside, the kids directly across the street are outside all the time, my boys love to be outside, those cars don't slow down for anybody. You can be outside with your children and you're yelling at them to slow down, they don't care. When there is a detour on Franklin, they get detoured down Ronald, so there's already a great flow of traffic. So bringing in a daycare center will increase that traffic flow. I do know, my son goes to an in-home daycare, I do know you cannot stop a daycare center. I do know that, she has that legal right. However, I do know she did share her proposal with the neighbors that did come over. I do want to point out, knowing my preschool background, I did look up the EEC regs. The classroom sizes that she has, it does require, with an infant room, she needs a one to three staff, three babies, one adult. So with having nine or seven infants in a room, you need that staffing. I have the regs right here. With having a nine-child toddler room, you need one adult for every toddler, for every five toddlers, sorry. And for preschoolers, you need one adult for every ten preschoolers that you have. And if you're going to factor in school-aged children up to eight, you need to account for that too. Also in the ECC regs, if you have twenty-seven through thirty-nine infant through preschoolers, as the program director, she is required to spend fifty percent of her time in the building being the program director and admin time, and she cannot spend that fifty percent of the time teaching. So it does require more staffing than what she handed out as a proposal to us, I'm not sure if that had changed when she had sent that to you. Also, being a special education teacher, I love that she wants to bring in those students and help those out. I've worked with those kids in preschool, I work with them day-to-day. But I do know that those students require a lot more hands-on, and if you're in a classroom or in a preschool setting with twenty kids and you have a very hands-on needy student, that student is going to require those two staff. You're going to require a lot more staff in that classroom, and if that student needs more support, you may need more outside support to help that student. So that's more people coming into the building, more parking that's going to be required, more people backing onto the street. So I'm just looking out for the safety of all of the kids in the neighborhood and the traffic flow in the street. It's just for the kids, like, I'm just looking out for the best interest, interest of all of them, because it's a very heavy street. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Anyone further? Okay.
Hey, y'all. I am, my name's Benjamin Moriarty, I'm at forty-three Ronald Street, directly across the street, and I am the one who has the three young boys running amok in the yard, I suppose. I think, without belaboring some of the points, you know, I think some of the obvious issues are, yeah, we are a tertiary street, right, so during the winter, we get one lane of plow, so if you have, what is it, sixty-one feet of curb, that, all of that is going to be plowed up, and I suppose, I'm not sure where that snow will be going, I guess she has the removable cement wheel stops that they're going to lift up and then move it into the back. Seems a little odd, but I think some of the other discrepancies they have, like Chairperson Paula mentioned, that when I, my analysis of the regulations was that the parking, she said ten, I think as you said, she needs more staff than she said. Two stacked parking, wanted, there's no maneuvering, right, so I don't think it meets any of the zoning for the maneuvering. I think there's even, what, there's no circum, one eighty-one point five one four six in the zoning says no circumstance, may there be, may the parking be satisfied by the moving of a parked car, so you have stacked parking, obviously, when staff are coming and going, they're going to be moving in and out. I guess if you have six staff and you need two to a classroom, and then apparently someone needs, I mean, if there's any changing of staff, you're going to have two in a classroom, someone's going to come, that person comes, the other person leaves, so there is overlap of more than six staff, so I don't see how that meets it. I think none of the parking landscaping requirements seem to have been met. It's over a thousand square feet of parking, there's no interior plants, not screened, there's no buffer strips. In the narrative, she mentions the garage possibly counting for one, but she mentions that she's using a two-yard rolling dumpster, which is six feet by three feet by three feet, so I see in the plan that she has a little section for the, what's it called, the trash and recycling, but in the narrative, she mentions that it's either going to be in the back, I guess where they're putting the snow, or in the garage, so if it's in the garage, I'm not sure how that would be a parking spot that could be utilized if the big dumpsters in there. Let's see. In the site plan, one issue I had is that there are three beautiful thirty-five-foot-tall red maples in the site plan. You kind of see it, it says rotting trees, but they're not rotting, they're thirty-five-foot-tall healthy maples, and they both would need to be removed, including one that's not on the plan in the top of the stacked parking, that also would have to be, so there goes three, uh, trees that, you know, we consider our neighborhood to be beautiful and quiet, and now it's all, the trees would be removed and turning into a half-paved, half-gravel pit, I guess. There's that, and then I think, I mean, I think that also was reiterated by the Department of Public Works when I saw their analysis, they said, you know, they recommend adjusting the parking lot so parking spots are parallel stacked in a single row, not stacked parallel like that, where there's no maneuvering and people can't come out. And then proposing a single large curb takes up the majority of the front yard, and it does not match the surrounding houses and the lifestyle, so I think this would obviously drastically change the qualities of the neighborhood, not to mention all the traffic and whatnot and everything, so. I think, um, yeah, that's my comments. Thank you.
Just, hold on one second, hold on, hold on one second. So just clarification, there was a comment about the narrative said the six-yard dumpster, but I see you have trash and recycling shown in a vinyl enclosure?
Yeah.
You're just using the trash and recycling?
The architect suggested that we might not be able to put the trash in the garage, so we removed it. So the, the explanation probably should have been updated to...
But you're not using a rolling dumpster anymore, they're just going to be...
I don't believe so, we think we'll be able to get away with, you'd be surprised you don't need...
Yeah, I would assume you have mostly office waste from...
Office waste and diapers.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry for not making that change.
Of course.
Kevin Snow, I live at fifty-four Ronald Street, right next to her. I was concerned about the dumpster, but now that we're not using the dumpster, what about, we are?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm confused about, because I was going to ask about the smell of the dumpster.
Yeah.
With all the children changing diapers and so on, and so on, and so on. I have a child myself, I know what a diaper smells like.
Good point, wherever the trash is located to not be...
You've pitched it at thirty-six times or whatever times.
Along the property line.
And nothing gets done, what happens if the trash gets to the lid? The sun bakes on it, what's it going to do? It's going to stink.
Yeah.
I don't want to smell that. That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Knowing that the children are going to need to be provided snack...
If you have, if there's any other comments, take it outside, just because we can't hear, there's multiple things going on.
Now, knowing that there's not going to be a dumpster, and knowing that the children need to be provided snack, they need to eat lunch, whatnot, diapering, that piles up very quickly, knowing that my family of five can overflow one trash barrel in a week, and it's overflowing to the point where the lid cannot close, having thirty-six children in one building, that is going to overflow one trash barrel. So what is going to be done about the trash if it is not a dumpster?
Okay.
Thank you. So, so I did have a suggestion, since we're on the topic, we might as well tackle that. My suggestion is that, you know, I agree that it probably shouldn't be along the left property line like it shows in this plan, but since our code does not allow them counting that garage as parking storage, the trash and and or recycling should be maintained within the building envelope until it needs to go out, and then you just pull it out like you would.
Minimum, yeah.
Regularly?
Yeah.
Because you can't, the garage cannot count as a parking space, if, unless you're living there, it doesn't count. So my suggestion is, we just solve the whole problem, just keep it in there, you, when you're...
That was the original plan.
Because you'll have, yeah, you'll have a private trash hauler, so you'll have to just pull, wheel them out when the trash hauler comes and collects.
Correct, right.
Okay, good.
I also have a family of six, so I manage trash.
Okay.
Surprisingly, we've never had to buy an extra bag.
Yeah.
Okay, sir.
Hello, my name is Bob Billidoo, and I live at thirty-three Darling Drive. I've been there for forty years, and as you can see, I'm the senior citizen, no question about that. But after listening to everybody talking here and talking of daycare center, I'd like to ask this young lady a question.
No, you're going to...
You can ask the board a question.
Okay, I'll ask you a question, and then you can ask her a question. Would she like to have a daycare center next to her house in Gardner? How would she feel about that? Because that's the way we feel at about here.
You can tell us how you feel.
It's kind of a very quiet neighborhood, it's a wonderful neighborhood, it's been this way for forty years, as long as I've been up there, the people get along together, they're very friendly, no problems at all. So I feel this is an struck against these people behind me, we all live there, and I don't think it's fair from an outsider from another city to come in here and start a daycare center in a wonderful neighborhood that we all like, and we're all opposed to it.
Do you mind if I add something?
What's that?
Could I add something to my, my side for a moment?
To your side, okay.
I grew up in Pittsburgh. I graduated from Pittsburgh State University in two thousand, I'm not an outsider, I moved from Myrtle Ave to Arlington Street to Harrison Ave, I grew up in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh is my hometown, I graduated from college here in Pittsburgh, and I'm coming back to serve the community back.
And I would just want to express, I'd really feel, comment should be on the plan and no, not in anybody's character, please. Is there any further public comment regarding this site plan in front of us this evening?
My name is Pat Ledger, I live on Teresa Street. Are we not a residential?
You are, it is residential A there, correct.
Okay.
Daycares are allowed, they're one of the protected uses, they're allowed by statute everywhere.
Why?
Massachusetts law.
Because that's master on law.
You take a beautiful neighborhood.
Same way a church is allowed everywhere.
It's a beautiful neighborhood.
Educational facilities, religious institutions, and daycare...
It is so wrong, this is so wrong.
Well, that's not...
It's not a Pittsburgh code thing, this is a state code thing.
And so when this goes south, what goes in, a package store, a massage place, a nail place, a hair dressing, what, what happens with that building?
It's whatever's allowed by the zoning code now.
None of those are allowed, by the way.
None of those uses are allowed in that area, again, this is an exempt use, like we said, religious institutions, educational...
It's very depressing. All of us have, I've lived there fifty-two years.
However...
I have never seen the likes of this in my life. Not only has she had this, she wants this building there, they've, they've taken all the trees that were separating the properties and gleaned them out so that we can now see the back of the preschool. Love it. Thank you.
Just, just, so we're clear, and I think, I think we just mentioned that, but just so everyone knows, this isn't a City of Pittsburgh thing, this is, daycare is allowed, it's an exempt use, so although it's an exempt use and allowed in every zoning district, which is not something we can control, the planning board does not take, we, we didn't make that decision, nor do we have control of it, there are still provisions of the zoning bylaw that have to be accounted for, and that's what the conversation is about today, is does this plan meet what, what code requires for parking and access and landscaping buffer and all that sort of stuff? So that's why we're here, just so everyone knows.
And that being said, if those requirements are not met and are not waived, and the site plan is denied, the applicant can come back with another site plan that meets the requirements.
Can I speak a minute?
What's that?
Can I speak a minute?
Uh, let me just finish the...
Oh, sorry.
I was just trying, so I'm just saying, if that's, if that's the case, that the, it's site plans, in some cases, other permits, once denied, you have to wait two years to come back. For a site plan, you can just come back with a new site plan scenario, and/or have issues, if you appeal it, then it goes to the ZBA from there, it can go to court from there. Just laying that out about what the, what the procedure would be for that. So, yes, now Mr. Cordio.
So me personally, I'm born and raised here in the City of Pittsburgh, and I've been personally responsible for bringing over forty dilapidated properties back to our tax roll, fixed up, cleaned up, brought back, and to go back to one of these comments about getting residents to come to the City of Pittsburgh, the last five properties that I have bought, fixed... I have bought, fixed and sold, have all been sold to out-of-towners, one from Indiana, and the rest are coming from the Boston area, so we're not struggling to bring people into town, whereas we're, we're actually a hotspot right now for people that want to live in central Mass. Pittsburgh is actually one of the, Pittsburgh all the way to Athol, we're actually a very up-and-coming place for people to come. Um, with that being said, we're not here to upset the residents, we bought the property, I own the property at the moment, every tree that was taken down is not from her, everything that's been done is not from her, as a legal owner of that property, I did all that stuff, so, and if this doesn't go through, obviously, I still own the property, so I have the right to widen the driveway or take out a tree, I just don't want her to be blamed for, you know, the trees coming down, because the gentleman we bought the property from did nothing for 25 years, so it sat there, it was ugly, it was old, and we're about to raise everyone's property value with taking this ugly property and turning it beautiful again, whether it be a daycare or someone's home down the road, so that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, and we're, we are evaluating what is presented in front of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a simple question, you said that the state allows preschools in residential areas.
Yes.
We got this as zoning, but you also said that based on the zoning, uh, her, her plan and the parking and how to manage that can be waived, who's responsible for waiving it?
Waivering of, the waiver provision for site plan, so we're not looking, there, the use is allowed, the use is allowed in the property, the site plan, where you're looking at the site for, we have to look at all the parking, the landscaping utilities and everything like that to see if it complies with the zoning ordinance requirements.
Correct.
That can be waived by the board, but again, it's, can only be waived by the board upon a finding that the reduction is not deleterious with public health and safety, or that the reduction promotes a public benefit. So we'd have to make a finding that any of the reductions that were being sought met that criteria.
Okay, so under, under this situation right now, uh, from the plan, uh, we have a couple issues, right?
Parking? Yes.
Traffic?
Uh, not so much traffic, it's the parking. I mean, again, it's a, we, what they have to provide is what's on the site, so we gotta look at what's on the site.
Right, but the site draws-
Yes.
Outside-
Yep.
I'm gonna call it interference because it increases the traffic in the neighborhood.
Does.
Uh, it puts other residents and children at risk.
We do have to look at traffic, site plan review also includes traffic flow and safety, yes, evaluation.
Okay, so that's included?
Yes.
Or did you, or we ever have to request it?
No, that's, that's included in what the board evaluates as the criteria.
Okay, and then when all said and done, the board can waiver-
Yes.
-conditions, all right, so ultimate responsibility is here.
Uh, with this, with what is proposed, we can evaluate the site plan with the requirements and see whether or not it meets our findings to be able to, to reduce it.
Right, and your findings drive-
As I mentioned, I think there's almost about, there may be eight or nine.
And your findings drive you to a decision, yes or no?
What's that?
I said, and your findings drive you to a decision, yes or no?
Yes, correct, once we make a fine-
Well, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is, is that, we're here trying to present a case that this situation shouldn't belong in our neighborhood, all right, and if it does, then I think what I'm hearing is that this board here has that decision to determine that.
It's about the site, again, not the, not that it can, can or cannot be used as a daycare, it is about-
That's not what I'm asking-
Because of the proposed use, we're looking at whether the site itself can accommodate the parking and, and landscaping and other requirements that are required of it, based on the use.
Okay, all right, so, uh, we have some conditions here, right, some things that need to be addressed as far as the plan's concerned?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I'll wait to hear those, thank you.
Yes. Again, does the board have, I want to break, any, any?
Well, I, I certainly, you know, can appreciate, you know, the applicant's desire to do a daycare center, uh, in Pittsburgh, and we all know that, you know, daycare is, is certainly needed, and, you know, your qualifications for running a daycare speak for themselves, I mean, it's, it's, it's a great idea, however, you know, I, I don't possibly see how this site is going to be able to support the magnitude of the business that you want to run here, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't possibly see how the parking can be arranged successfully to make it work. If you can come back with a plan that shows it, we're certainly welcome to look at it, but whereas this right now, I, I don't, I don't see it's workable.
So, um, and now just break it back to the code requirements, it's like you have to show, I mean, the site is 10,000 square feet that you've chosen, and you need to fit all of these things, things on it. Um, so whether or not the site can, you can actually meet those requirements, or whether or not the, the board is willing to waive any portions of those requirements, but there's quite a significant number of them, it's not just wavering like a landscaping buffer, you've got minimum, minimum of the, minimum of the 12 spaces, it sounds like there may potentially be a need for more, um, but-
Can I, can I speak to that by chance?
Sure.
The number of, of staff, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, she was correct that an infant-to- toddler ratio is one to three, however, it then changes two to seven, and a toddler, um, a toddler ratio is, she is correct, one to four, but it changes two to nine, and the to, the preschool ratio is one to 10, so it is six, six staff for each, two for each classroom at maximum capacity, her numbers were correct for the first teacher, it changes when you go to double, and the conversation about a director, about 50% being director, 50%, those are, some of those are half-twos or cannot, um, like, for example, when you go beyond 39 children, your director absolutely cannot work in a classroom, so there were some part, partly factual, but the other part of that was incorrect, my staffing number of six is correct, based on EEC regulations.
Like the average of it basically comes down to one per six?
Huh?
The average comes down to one per six, when depends on how many children, depends on all the ages.
Because the younger the kids are, the, the smaller your group is, but you always have to have two staff, so the maximum size for an infant group is seven, once you have more than three children, you need a second staff, but it's not one to three making it one, two to six, it's one to three, two to seven, and toddlers would be one to four, two to nine, not two to eight, it doesn't increase that way.
But, but to be clear, that had nothing to do with your count, right?
No, this is just straight from the ordinance count.
No, but they were questioning that I was in fact, I was-
No, 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 that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
I wasn't just, I just didn't want to go to a back and forth, because that didn't matter.
They were, well, they were saying that I needed more than six staff to staff the program.
So that number doesn't matter for the board, what Paul is saying is-
It does, because parking is based off of staff, I'm sorry.
So what Paul is saying is, based on the count she had, it's 11, correct?
12.
12?
But we only have nine, right? Is that how you count?
It's 10.
Where is the, so, two, four, six, eight?
I thought that, oh, maybe the, the one, oh, right, well, I mean, if you're not using the garage theoretically, the one in front of the garage could be, I think the bigger issue is twofold, the curb cut, like Paul had said, the width of the curb cut, and-
Yeah, there's 10 on the plan, there's 10 parking, with the garage was 11, that's where I was getting to my 11, not knowing that I couldn't use the garage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like I said, I think that, that the issues that need to be resolved, aside from stacked parking, which we don't generally like as a board to begin with, but for the sake of argument, let's assume that that's not the biggest issue, the biggest issue is backing out into the street and the width of that curb cut, the width of that curb cut, we would not allow that for any project, commercial, residential, any proj, it's too, way too big.
Okay.
Um, so then, if the curb cut needs to be reduced, how does that change parking, and how does that solve the problem? I, I, I think I agree with Peter, that there's just some constraints to the site that just might make it impractical, um, I, 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 because I agree with what you drew here as far as this is the best you could do, the question then becomes is, is the best you could do suitable, and I don't know that it meets that threshold.
I think right now it doesn't, it definitely is out of neighborhood character, or you're, there's a commercial, it's really, it's really, with the amount of, sheer amount of parking on a 10,000-square-foot lot, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a, it's a commercial use in the residential, and again, I know it's like exempt, but it is, uh, how it's being constructed with the driveways or proposed at this time is not in keeping with the neighborhood character, even though, you know, the house itself, with the extent of paving, but you're also gonna meet that landscaping buffers and those buffers and the side buffers to the, um, butters with the parking, um, is like, I know they mentioned like, yes, traffic flow and safety, backing out, can't be backing out into the street. Again, it's, it's a commercial use, it's not a residential use, so those aspects about stacked parking and backing out for one and two families doesn't apply, that's for those types of uses, this is a commercial use, so you have to be able to accommodate those things on your site, so whatever site you chose, choosing, needs to be able to meet these requirements, and it's, that is for the purpose of traffic flow and safety aspects.
And I have, I have the same concern, well, my concerns are the employee parking, number one, I don't know how you would plow gravel, I mean, your grock, the gravel's gonna be everywhere, um, and then, uh, do you close like schools close, so when it's, when you do have to plow it, are all those cars gonna be going onto the street?
We would have delayed openings in snow, or we would close depending on the weather.
So similar to a school, like a home.
It's, it's similar to a school, yep. And you'd have reduced numbers of children that come on snow days, that's just a, an industry trend, um, that you would have less children, and you would, you would plow as you, as you go and as you need to, but we would always have a, um, you know, five to, you know, we'd always have at least half the parking available upon opening in a snowstorm, but you know snowstorms in New England, you, you do your best you can to keep up with all of them, right?
And, um, I don't know what the answer is, so I don't know whether or not, um, you feel that you can, um, make these changes?
Yep.
That actually would, try to, try to accommodate this with the-
Yeah, we had other things, we can go back and-
Take two?
Yep.
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 But I, again, I, feasibly, I don't see how you can fit the 12, 12 spaces in with the, with the driveway layout in, but we'll see whatever you-
That could be, that could be a waiver we asked for, was reduced number or no?
Uh, reduced number, but based upon what you're having for child, it's, it's, um, not likely.
Okay.
I mean, the last thing we want with, with any use like this is, is drop-offs to occur in the street, it's, um, not only, you know, even though this is a side street, and, you know, it's, it's not something you want to encourage, you, you don't want to create a situation where you have, you know, people that can get hurt getting out of cars on the street, coming onto property, I, it's, so, I mean, there needs to be loading and unloading on the site, I think that we would, we would require that for any similar use, it's just, it's, it's basically, it's not good planning, it's common sense to make sure that everything happens on the site.
Correct. So, um, when-
I just have one more thought. Around the parking, okay, we're talking about number of spaces, all right, but we're not looking at the movement of cars within that space, so we'll, you have one car move out, and then the next, the next one?
We're addressing that, stacked parking, yes. Because that also, to, to be minimized, is the stacked parking, because that provision is, yeah, okay.
I understand, thank you.
I understand, thank you. Um, again, because it's like, I know where you're citing it, the location, and I know you understands, like, you don't want a commercial area, but you have to have a large enough area to be able to accommodate these uses, and it's just a small parcel at this point to try to see how you can do that.
Might I ask a question?
Sure.
In regards to parking, if we create a, a horseshoe, does that take any, I, I'm not even sure, I'm just, it is a question that I asked when I met with Chantel, if you create a horseshoe, does that account for any of your parking, or is that just a, a throughway? Like, if you were to have a drop-off area, that would-
Well, it'd have to be double wide, you'd have to be able to-
Yeah, I'm just asking the question, I, just out of, like-
You're talking about right in front of the building going like this?
Right, right.
I mean, even if you did that, I don't know if you can make it wide enough to have, you know, you're talking, so you're talking eight feet wide for a car, plus another eight to 10 to 12, probably 10 feet at least for a through lane, I mean-
It's fine, I was just curious if it counted towards the parking, it was just a question, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Well, it'd have to be wide enough to pass by it to park, because if you're using a drop-off, you can't park there.
Yeah, so it'd be like, two width wide, right.
Yeah, at least, and then you'd have to have some sort of traffic flow.
I'm just, because I'm looking, I've, I've driven by, um, Busy Bee's on Hagby-
Yeah, I know they have.
And they have the, the U shape, um, and I, and I've been by Kid Stop on Claritin, and they don't seem to have any parking other than their U shape, so I guess I'm a little, you know-
I don't even know when those are approved, I don't even know when those are approved to happen, you were probably talking 30, 40 years ago for most of those.
I went to Busy Bee, so-
I did too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
Yeah.
Um, it's a good question, I don't know when they were approved, I could, I can't, I can't tell you.
Okay, so we're done with the public comment at this time?
Oh, okay.
It's okay. Um, do you have anything further, or any, you know, further questions of us?
I don't.
No, I think we're gonna go back to the drawing board and just, uh, with the architect and get it taken care of.
And we can send you those, like, the, yep, again, you've got the, the bullet list between the-
Yep, perfect.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's just, there's just a lot to it, understandably, it's hard when you just come in to-
Yep.
Um, might I ask, um, that I, I have an updated email address, I think, Chantel, do you have that?
Your updated email?
Yeah, the one that I communicated with you today on?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, you have the updated, yep, so that would be the one to use if you could, please.
Okay.
Um, in order to make sure that we have enough time to look at things so that, um, you know, if, if changes are made, like I said to the last applicant, at least two weeks beforehand, um, if things come in last minute, they lead to chaos and they lead to another continuance and all that stuff, so make sure they're to us in enough time where we can send it to DBW for them to look at it, we have enough time to look at it, and, you know, it's, 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 it's better for you too, because then you can feel comment beforehand.
Oh, and we did that, yeah, we did that for this, today's meeting, so.
I, um, if, you know, if the parking becomes so problematic, um, I hope that there's an alternative, because I'd love to see you operate in Pittsburgh, I just, you know, again, I'm skeptical this site can accommodate it, period, I just, you know, I, I, I hope there's another plan.
I was thinking right along those same lines, uh, you, you can certainly come back with some additional plans, but the only way I see this working is, is to reduce the number of children there-
Well, that may, that may well be an option.
And, and reduce the number of parking spaces, but getting back to what the vice chair's saying, I'd rather see you open a daycare with 36 children, and, and with, with someone that is so into property and has developed so many pieces of property in Pittsburgh, it, it might be a good idea to find another site that'll accommodate 36 children, that'll have no issues with parking, that, that is still a decent residential neighborhood.
We try to limit our firing squads.
Yeah.
We try to limit our firing squads.
I can think of a good, I can think of a good social club that might be a good location for this, but-
It's coming soon, so, it will be, it will be there, hopefully by October 31st, so.
It was hard, I mean, we looked.
Goal right now.
We have looked, we, we have looked.
Yeah, finding a location is harder and harder.
I think you can read the writing on the wall here, you know, that it's gonna have to be smaller-
Yep.
-for it to work.
We'll figure it out.
And the, and the bottom line is, I, I, Pittsburgh needs daycare, and I'd rather love to see you open a substantial daycare that accommodates a lot of children.
But you can't go, I, I mean, I, I'm also a very smart woman, contrary to what some people have said in the neighborhood, I am, you can't start huge, and you can't, um, you know, I, I just have to, I, I have to think about business sense, I'm, I'm, you know, about business sense, I'm, you know, I'm going into this very, very well thought out. And I know, I'm not surprised that I, the neighbors are, you know, responding the way they are. I worked with a client that I did this in Worcester, so we'll go back to the drawing board. I love this site for the children, to be honest. And I'm a very professional, I really had hoped to be part of a neighborhood, not contrary to the neighborhood, with some kind of scarlet letter and everybody knows which car I drive and that kind of thing. So, we are where we are, though, and hopefully we can keep moving forward.
Well, let us know what you'd like to do. Again, we'll continue us to the next meeting, whether you'd like to do that or
That'd be great, yeah.
Yes, please. You can certainly do that, but whatever you'd like
Make a motion, continue to June 2nd.
Motion's are made with the second, all those in favor say aye.
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 What, Tuesday in June?
All those opposed?
27th, I believe.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
So, about as you heard, 27th is the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck. We have our minor site plans. We have minor site plan review, actually
If everyone can start clearing out and just go meet in the hallway, that'd be great. If you're not here for a future hearing.
Right.
We're almost there, Hal, we're almost there. We're getting there.
So we'll do the minor modification and special permit for Mad River Solar. Mad River Solar. We have minor site plans. I know, you were first and you weren't here.
We called you, John.
I was first, yes, and you might know that I was late getting out of the office.
Can you guys just shut that?
Please.
Excuse me?
I'll just get it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairperson Karen and members of the board. This is a request by Mad River Solar, essentially, I guess, to transfer the permit from Mad River Solar to Mad River Holdings LLC. And as Mr. O'Hara pointed out to me, and I think Ms. Fleck also pointed out, that the Mad River Holdings was not yet incorporated in Massachusetts, or organized in Massachusetts. I brought that to my client's attention and they did refile or file with the Commonwealth, the Secretary of the Commonwealth. And the problem was, is that, as you folks might not be aware, but there already is a Mad River Holding LLC.
Yes.
And so what the, apparently the Secretary of the Commonwealth's office said they could do is they could still incorporate as Mad River Holdings LLC, but they had to do business in Massachusetts under the name of Mad River Holdings Ash LLC.
What was that?
Ash, referencing Ashburnham Street.
Ah.
I've got copies of the approval, yeah, I didn't bring enough unfortunately.
You can give it to Chantel and let Paula and Cecile.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
That's fine, I'll pass it down.
Technological stage of bringing it on my computer and putting it up on that, but anyway.
Okay.
So
Is the official name Mad River Holdings LLC with the Commonwealth?
That's right.
Okay.
Holdings, and that's why they said that you have to have a doing business designation so that it will distinguish Mad River Holdings LLC from Mad River Holding LLC.
Couldn't they just change the name entirely? Anyway, I don't want to get there, that's fine.
You noticed because I looked it up.
Yeah, that would have made my job a lot easier, but
Didn't have Thomas as the manager, no, he said this is not the right Mad River.
Yeah.
Right. But, no, I mean, I think we're, yeah, so it's requesting that, and the reason being is that the development of the whole idea and the project was done by Mad River Solar LLC, which is a more of a development type of company. The principal, you know, and effectively the client of Mad River Solar was Tom Danufel, and he will still be, he's going to be the managing partner of Mad River Holdings LLC, DBA, Mad River Holdings Ash LLC.
Okay.
And then the other item was, if you want to just briefly just mention, or maybe he wasn't involved in the stormwater issue?
And then I'd like to address the stormwater, you can bring that up.
Yeah, it's up there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was going to be on the agenda tonight or not.
DPW response?
Yeah, that's it, that's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, so this was Nick's response to, there was a review, comments to the stormwater plan that was part of the permit condition.
I think, I think because of the logging that happened a year and a half ago, there were concerns about was the drainage design still adequate for the site? And I believe that the engineer, Mr. Coons, or Coon, Tim Coon, had addressed that and said that essentially it is. It was reviewed by, because, I mean, quite frankly, the whole plan was designed around the idea that the trees would be cut down for the solar fields. So, the problem has been, we haven't been able to get to the stage of constructing the drainage that is needed for the solar fields. I believe Nick said that he had just one variation, which was, I think, for monitors.
Yeah, I'll just read it quick, because I have it up. Recommend that the project proponent monitor the site starting now until one year following the completion of construction to assess the performance of the ongoing restoration work and the solar field drainage design. Project proponents should report back to the planning board on a regular basis by summarizing observations made over the monitoring period. Any deficiencies noted should be remedied to the planning board's satisfaction.
Right.
I assume you guys are okay with that?
Yes.
I don't know what sort of
When you say regular monitoring period would be, we're thinking every three months, four months?
I would suggest probably every three months.
Think about how long this is going to take.
And, most likely, the, I think, for the purposes of just everything going smoothly, probably just give a paper, you know, a summary on paper so we can forward it to the DPW, so we have something in writing. We don't necessarily
In advance, yeah, in advance.
It's all we need is
We only need someone here if something comes up, if there's something that needs to be rectified.
Okay, yep, that would be appreciated.
Yes, you just have to submit.
Okay, and I did want to mention for your folks edification, you know, we did have some rain episodes, we haven't really had that much rain this spring, but we did have some earlier in March that caused some problems. We did have John Aylward up there doing some rework with the berms. I believe they are up there now, and this isn't exactly in your bailiwick, but I believe they're up there now working on completion of the remediation that was required by the Conservation Commission. And so, hopefully that will be done within, I believe, about the next couple of weeks. Then, after that's completed, I think we need the Conservation Commission to sign off on that at their meeting on June 7th, I believe. I believe they can start with the actual construction there and installing the drainage, which should alleviate, subject to the monitoring, the problems that's caused by the logging and
So July-ish is what they're starting construction, more or less?
I believe so, Paul, yeah. I'm not sure exactly the timeframe for finishing it, but I know they want to try to get it done.
Okay, I will make a motion to, let me pull up the document here so I have the right thing. Make a motion to authorize, oh, I don't even have it there because that's not on that one that I'm looking at.
The top bill of sale?
What's that, oh, yeah, no, I know, but I was trying to, I was trying to figure out the exact motion that we were doing, but, oh, it's probably on the new agenda, there we go. To make a motion to authorize the transfer of the permit to the new entity as noted, as well as
Corporating the DPW comment for the monitoring of the storm, of the stormwater.
Exactly, and then just requesting three month written summaries of that monitoring. Yep.
Okay. Second that.
It was a second, right?
That was me and Alex.
Oh, I thought I heard, I'm like, I heard, I think it was Alex, right?
I thought so too, but you were very quiet there.
It was like very quiet, like Alex seconded, all right. There's a motion with a second, and I'll say, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose.
Aye.
Wait, take roll call, wait a second.
Well, then don't say it like that.
First I'll say, roll call. All right.
That's fine, you're fine, go ahead.
That's what I start off every time.
I understand.
Tracy?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Paula, aye, okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you all, the board and folks at home, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thanks.
It gets so quiet when that
All right. Is there, is Mr. Siney out?
No.
No, then we won't take it up.
Yep, we got Hal here, though.
But we do have, and so now we can go underneath. Other business, Hal, Mr. Melanson.
All right. Good evening.
How's it going, you have any updates?
Hey, you sent us pictures, I got them right here.
Ah, look at that.
I do have pictures, yes.
So that's the side of the, you can narrate these if you want, Hal, so that's
Okay, parking, parking is in place, and there are actually five spots there. The last spot will be deleted because of the fence that we
On the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so
The last spot here?
Well, you can, actually, probably when I took the picture, that's showing four spots. So, there's one more line there, exactly where the gate will be.
Okay. I don't know what order these are in, so I'm just clicking on them willy nilly here, so I don't know if you
That's lighting.
Oh, you're lighting, perfect.
That is lighting.
Okay, so there was a requirement for showing the exterior lighting, perfect, exterior lighting.
Lighting as well as some parking.
Okay.
So that would be the three spaces.
Yep. Ha, there you go, okay.
Ah, look at that, grid looks good.
Arrows in, arrows out.
So that's on the closer side, and then I'm guessing this is the far side, one way, excellent. So this is, those of you that weren't there, this is when you drive up the side closest to the Cumberland Farms, to the River Street side, or I shouldn't say River Street side, I suppose, the Wallace side.
The Wallace end, the east end of the property.
And we have, so the parking along the street
The four spaces along River Street.
And the fence repaired.
I was just going to say that.
Yep, and, perfect. And I noticed, not to muddy the waters, Hal, but I noticed whoever did your, did you do the striping or did you have, you had someone else do the striping?
Somebody else.
I noticed they got a little antsy and they did those spaces that we talked about, and then it looked like someone had since rubbed them out or something.
I got there at 6:30 in the morning to let him know that we weren't going to do those, it was done.
There, it's, I, like I said, I wasn't rubbing salt and I noticed it looked like after I went by, it looked like someone else put some other paint over it or something.
Someone did, yes.
Good, good.
Okay, is this a gate to the back?
Where is this gate right here, Hal?
Trying to figure out what I'm looking at.
Oh, that gate is just prior to the loading dock.
Oh, yes, so this is the loading dock we were talking about, the fencing, right here, Paula.
Okay.
So I parked over here when I went there, this is Joel's building, right? The one back there? Oh, no, that's yours, that's yours and his is on the other side, right, 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 right. That's the one we were talking about, the siding.
So that gate is right near the handicap spot.
Yep. Perfect, okay.
So this is, that's, so that's the gate to secure the area, okay, I'm trying to like from here, oh.
When you, when you go in, Paula, and you take a right along his building, it's about 75 feet right there, yeah, so when you pull in the second entrance
The building's on the left.
What?
Building's on the left, I'm driving down.
Yep, the building will be to your left, it's like 75 feet or 100 feet from the front door.
50 feet.
50 feet, whatever, yeah. Oh, here, I'll show you, actually, you can see it from this picture. So, it's right, it's right past here, right, Hal?
No, no, it's way back toward the east end of the building.
Oh, it's on this side?
As soon as you go down that little hill, that gate is on the left.
So
It was open, so you probably didn't notice.
Oh, okay. That's even just, that's even just a park along this area, you've got a gate in the front.
Yeah, so these, those, these are the spaces I was just looking at, right? Right here?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so it's, so yeah, so it was a little behind that, but
This is not a gate, this, it almost looks like a gate
No, these two, these two we're talking about.
Stationary, this gate is open.
Yeah, this is the, this is the fence on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, these gates, yep.
Is that the new gate?
No, what I was just going to say, though, Paula, was, and Hal, I don't know if you've done the fence that we talked about for the loading dock, if that locks and you can have a security plant to lock that while, just while you're loading.
Depends what other things that everybody made, but they've got other businesses back there, I don't know
That's true. Anyway, let's not muddy it, like, we already solved that problem, let's keep on task. So, for the board members that weren't there, Paul and I did a site walk with Chantel and Mary Jo Friday, I think it was, and one of the things that came up was how we've been relatively consistent in requiring all the facilities to have some sort of screened in area where they load the product, so they're not just out in the open. And so, we had discussed with Hal kind of some ways to do that, and we told him that, you know, he can get that done between now and when he's ready to open. Now, that was, I think that was mutually agreed upon.
Yes.
Yeah, and you said that was probably only going to take a matter of weeks.
As long as there's material available, it can be done in a week.
Okay. So, I'll say, before he actually commences operation of the ME portion, to have the security fence and stuff.
Right.
And just for clarification, and again, we discussed this, there were two outstanding items that Paula had mentioned. One was the siding condition of this building right here in the distance, the one that fronts on River Street.
Right.
And we had discussed with Hal, because of the cost associated with that and, you know, how much he's already expended into this building, we basically said, if he makes a commitment to try and do it within a year of commencement of his operation, to get that done, along with, there's no picture of it, but there's a
Oh, yeah, you can see that right there, like a
Yeah, you can see the beginning of it here, this, yeah, this cable area, to have a more sturdy guardrail there so that people can't, you know, drive to the river and we don't have an issue like we had at Barbs Riverside, if you guys remember that.
And he was going to make an attempt to cut back some of the knotweed, at least by the frontage on River Street, that corner.
That has been done.
Key word, attempt.
I said, keep attempting, keep attempting.
No, I did it, but I, right, okay.
You're just like regularly
That has been done, I didn't take a picture.
Okay, that's appreciated, too. So, yeah, with those two, so the guardrail and with the garage, if he's going to, because of the potential lead issue, repaint it or re-site it, but do something aesthetically to improve the
Correct.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Great. And you got the, did drop off, did Chantel get the signed permit?
Yeah, I did, and I still got to bring it to the town clerk, I'll bring it there tomorrow, it's been a little busy. So, I will do that.
So, you'll have that, you'll have the next signed permit to record, to start the 20 days?
I will email Hal when the 20 day peel is up, so you can pick it up at the town clerk's office.
Great.
Okay.
The board members that don't understand exactly why Hal is here, because I didn't originally either, it's, I guess the building commissioner is looking for kind of an okay, that it's okay to issue an occupancy permit or okay so that he can apply to the CCC for the final license. So, though there isn't technically a vote to take here, I think the right way to handle this is just to say, you know, unless there's anyone on the board that objects, and, you know, you can obviously feel free to object if you do, that we just authorize Chantel kind of collectively without objection to approach Commissioner Barbero and just say that the planning board is okay with the current permit conditions as they stand, knowing that we have an agreement for the outstanding ones that we've mutually agreed upon in this meeting.
That you get the CO, but before you commence the ME portion, you'll record that in the That you get the CO, but before you commence the ME portion, uh, we'll record that in the registry of deeds.
Understood.
At least gets you going with the CCC.
And have the gate done, yes.
Understood.
Okay.
I can make a note of that in Open Gov as well.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I just, I didn't want it to get lost, that's why I just said, you know, make sure you mention it to him, too. It's always nice to have it in writing, but, you know, tell him so that Mark can start whatever. Or I assume you have to go there, I don't know how that's gonna work. 'Cause I don't think he's just gonna, you know, either do it, go and apply for occupancy, or I don't even know how this works. So, did he, did he tell you he was looking for something from us?
No.
Okay.
No, I thought I got, I thought I got it from you.
Okay, occupancy permit?
Yes.
No, Commissioner Barbero.
I understand, but he's withhold, it's because he needs complete activities before it's released, is what the permit says. That's why.
Okay.
He's, but he's, he's held by, he's held by that.
What we're doing today should solve those hiccups.
Okay.
So there shouldn't be anything else.
So it would allow you to occupy the building to start outfitting, you know, but not commence the ME portion until the decision has met its twenty day timeline.
Understood.
And you record it. Because once you record it, that's when it becomes effective. So then you'll be.
Okay.
Everything on the up and up.
Yep.
So, sound good?
Very well, okay.
Any question, any questions?
No.
You should be all set.
Do you have anything else for me, then?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That should be it, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely good luck to you.
We gotta root for the little guy, 'cause all these big companies that are coming through here, that. Yeah, well, good luck, Hal.
I know. Last. We have two sixteen dash eleven, PUD Development, five seven nine South Street, with, uh, I know Bill's not here, uh, New Lance Delegano for an updated landscape plan. This is one of the outstanding permit conditions.
I have to excuse myself, I'm gonna butter. I'll stay, I'll stay, I'll hand up.
I'm fine with you, just stay, Paul.
No, that's okay, I can.
Okay.
Can I?
Thank you, though.
Wait a minute, I can't get on the screen and change anything.
Do you want my screen? All you can do is click on Screen Chair, just right-click on your name. I'll, I can, I'll put it up. You're fine.
Can you just put earplugs in or something?
It's, it's, it's fine. You guys, uh, hold on one second. All right, uh, landscape plan, is that what you want? This thing?
Landscape plan's fine.
Oh, perfect.
Load up a little bit.
That's, so. You can sit here, Amanda, if you want, and just scroll.
Could you, could you do that for me, Amanda?
I can do it.
Just, if you click once, it'll zoom out, there's no in-between. It's either zoom there or zoom out.
I, I have no mouse battery, so I can't actually do anything with the screen right now. 'Cause I'm, I'm not good at talent.
Do you want me to hand you the copies?
Sure.
Of the plan?
I will take them, thank you.
Here we go, can you shrink it down just a little bit? Yeah, oh, a little bit bigger.
I don't know.
Oh, that's, it goes one way, the other, huh? All right, that's fine. That how you zoom it in?
I don't know, he told me one click is all I got.
That's okay. All right, you wanna disc, you wanna describe what your plans are? Thank you.
So what we're looking at here, uh, is specifically pertaining to the existing building and the finished landscape with that. Uh, the front building, we've kind of, uh, whited out a bit 'cause I don't wanna confuse the two, the two of them. Uh, so the green, kind of flush green areas are all grass. And then you can see starting from the rear of the building where the retention pond is. We have, uh, the rows of maple trees. Uh, and then we have a row going up, uh, to the condo, uh, buildings of white pines, which runs all the way up, uh, till you see there's a little box, which is the electrical pad. And as we move to the front of the building, uh, you'll see there's another, uh, kind of grass, green patch in the front with more trees going up. Uh, some more maples. And one thing that, uh, on the site meeting, uh, we added in, if you move all the way to the front, uh, from, South Street, when you're exiting.
The entrance.
On.
Get down, and then pull it down.
Yep.
I can't pull it.
Uh, maybe the sidebar.
On the side.
Sidebar, there you go, oh, getting it. The other way, yeah, there you go. There you go.
Yeah, if you go a little further, yeah, perfect. So that entrance is something that we added in after our site visit that we're gonna plant, uh, some low, um, uh, greenery. And the rest will be bark mulch, like a dark bark mulch. And then, uh, budded by the, uh, grass, which has already grown in now. Uh, the opposing corner, which isn't showing, uh, we didn't wanna put in due to the nature of the new building going in. Uh, but that's gonna actually match that other corner as you're pulling in. And also we added, uh, which we're gonna start planting, uh, a row of, uh, more, uh, pine trees, evergreens. And we're gonna keep it lawn, which is gonna be about five, six feet from those trees to the street. Uh, maintained with dark bark mulch all the way in between that whole row of trees. And, uh.
Those evergreen?
Those are gonna be evergreens also, yes.
Like arborvidi type things?
Yeah, they, they're in the, um, yes, yes, they're in that family, but they're, they're, they're the fatter ones, they call them. They're not the taller, narrower ones. So they're gonna fit more to what we're trying to accomplish, uh, with the, uh, eye line buffer for the building, you know? Which, whatever we put there will be a beautiful building, I know that. But I understand it may take a little bit by the time we actually construct it. So I think that would, it would definitely dress it up from the street.
The landscaping, I can straight to the, um, residential, the butter to the south there? I know there's like, uh, the note about, like, to, that will be, like, to be done? You're gonna put a fence, this, to be, like, similarly, this.
Correct.
And like the white pines?
Yep, correct, so if you're looking, um, let's see, on the lower left side, it says white pines. And it, and it just kinda ends. Uh, that is gonna continue all the way up to that corner and meet with those pines. And there'll be a continued fence also. Uh, that all would be part of that, you know, when we construct that building and that front.
Also, no, still no fence now?
There isn't any fence now, no. No, it does go up to, as it's notated on the, uh, the plan there.
Do you have a, uh, predicted timeline for when you might develop?
I mean, it really, it, based on the approval, I, I would, I am ready to build. So it would be based on, you know, if we're able to put the, um, the building up. What I'd be proposing, which is the residential, uh, mixed-use building.
Oh, um, 'cause, yeah, so the proposed, so what's, what was approved is the forty-five hundred square foot, just, just commercial building at this time.
Correct.
And you saw the elevation, so that's the architectural elevation that was approved. Any change in that you'd come back to, to say this is?
Correct, I, I have actually, I already engaged Hamway for the changes and explained that we're not changing the actual footprint. So he's gonna, I guess, there's a few adjustments on the backside as far as what he would need to do. 'Cause the nature of the construction is gonna be a type of walkout. So as far as the landscape finish in the back, it isn't gonna change, no.
Okay, I'm just thinking of the timeline for when he can expect, that we can expect of just to complete that landscaping piece for him on, you know, for the, the view of the, on that side. So that's, I was just thinking of just a timeline. Like, if, if the building's not done by.
Sure.
If, if it's not constructed by X, then you'd put it in by Y.
Sure. So I, I would say he, about three weeks, he said he would have something finished. And if it isn't a drastic, say, change in the elevations, I would have no problem with putting in the trees earlier. Uh, it wouldn't necessarily affect that, if that's what.
Okay.
You know, I'd be fine.
So you're looking, though, relatively soon to do some type of construction?
If I could, absolutely.
Okay, not like years out?
No, 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 I, I would, I would have, I, I mean, ideally, I was hoping that, um, a dentist officer or someone would have come in and leased the pad or built or something, but it just hadn't gone in that direction, you know, for the last, say, year and a half of marketing. So that's really the only reason why I'm trying to go in the mixed-used direction instead, so.
So I'm gonna toss this out there, too, if you're gonna come up with anything other than what's approved, it would be, it's gonna be, um, a public hearing for an amendment to do that. Uh, you also can come in front of the board underneath our other business section with anything proposed to get a feel from the board for direction prior to submission of your plan, too. Just saying, there's an avenue for that as well.
Okay, like submit something that, like a preliminary?
Exactly, like a preliminary to, yeah, for, you know, for some.
I do have.
Comment and stuff, so you could do that.
Okay.
To get feedback.
Okay, I could do that more sooner than later, then I do have something together, uh, from the architect. And, uh, the Hannigan, who was the site person, said he could have something together for me within a couple of weeks, two, three weeks, so.
So depending on what timeline you have that, um, if it meets our, um, deadline for submissions for.
April top.
June, I'm not sure when that is.
Uh, I think the fifth. Don't hold me to that, though.
However, if it's just on the other business, we can take that later.
Yes.
Yeah. 'Cause.
Okay.
Understanding that it's, it's preliminary and not a hearing, that.
Okay.
Scenario.
Okay. So I know I loosely presented it a while, a little while ago.
Yep.
You know, so I guess.
It's similar to that.
It would be similar, right.
If you change, change it around, whichever. I think we gave feedback then, so if you wanna present something else, that's more feedback. Or you say, hey, I'm just gonna go with this.
Okay.
You can do that, too.
Okay, okay. And there's nothing sooner, there's no meetings sooner that I could present something?
No, for a full hearing, um, it's gonna be by June 5th. It'd be like all the application package, site plan, everything.
Okay.
Like, I'll, I'll be ready to go. Um, but if you know, can't meet that date for the hearing date, you can still, um, apply, you know, look preliminary materials. And we can still look it at at the meeting and then advertise it for subsequent one.
A follow-on, okay. Okay.
Like that, how that works. That makes sense.
Sure, sure, so June 5th.
Yes, would be the, like, the middle date for, uh, the hearing, if you're looking in for an amendment for your permit. If you're gonna do anything other than what's been already approved.
Okay.
Then you're, then you're technically seeking an amendment.
Okay.
So it's a full public hearing, notice to a butters and.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. In that aspect, too, I think I do, we did meet on-site. And you also were looking into getting, like, certification from a traffic engineer on the site distance that, with the sidewalk that was put in, and the vegetation clearing that it now meets adequate site distance.
Correct, I, I engaged him already. Uh, he's supposed to be going out there next week. Uh, and at the same time, I actually asked him, uh, if he could update the, uh, report uh, with the new building that I'd be proposing. Uh, so we have that also, to say how that affects the overall traffic impact.
Yeah, make sure you get all the.
So he gave me all the requirements for that, so I'll have that also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
And I, I think I actually drove by this morning and then that was, they were actually installing maple trees.
Yes.
I was gonna ask when it was starting.
Yes, yeah.
And at least in the rear, so sorry, yeah, maple trees going in.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, the, the row, I think, was scheduled for, he's gonna start the end of, uh, next week. So that'll start, you'll see, in the front.
And are there any other questions from the board? So this was a, a permit condition to up, submit an updated, it was submission of an updated landscaping plan to include landscaping, uh, along the entranceways and along the frontage, particularly if the building wasn't to be, uh, constructed, the, in building, to screen it from the road.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of like the, well, the intent. All right.
Motion to approve the five seventy-nine South Street landscape plan. Uh, number twenty sixteen dash eleven.
Second.
Second.
I think we can do this, motion was made in second, are those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are those opposed? Okay. I got that. I'll say technically it didn't ask for approval in the permit, but there it is. It was submission, at least submission of that to include it. So if it didn't include it.
Right.
You'd still have to come meet that requirement. But that requirement was, again, an outstanding one that.
Right.
Should've been done, so the sooner, when do you think it's gonna be completed?
The, the planting?
Yes, the planting.
I'd say probably within a week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, do you have any questions of us?
When, when that's completed, is there anything else I need to do from my end, or?
I don't think so. I think you're, would be all set, that can satisfies with the, also, like, this, this sidewalk and the pieces satisfies the CO aspects, again, that was outstanding for screening.
Sure.
Purposes.
Sure.
So I think, I think you're good there.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone.
Good luck to you.
Yes, thank you.
Look at that, Amanda is gonna, like, second.
She's in charge from now on.
No, no.
I'm done. Passing the candle.
Stepping up.
All right.
All right, and then, any other, uh, we just have any, we don't have any minutes, those are still being worked on. Um, communications?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of things, if you, um, bear with me for one second. Um, so the first was, um, some of you might recall, I don't remember how long ago it goes, there was a cell tower that we had approved on Winusnok Road. Uh, Winusnok Road Dead Ends, it's at the end of the Dead End, uh, many years ago, SBA is the owner. Um, there was a rain event about a month ago that washed away the road. Um, so we got some calls from the neighbor, and you'll have to excuse my, my family on this thing, 'cause I gotta find the, um, I gotta find the pictures that I took of first, the road washing away. And, let's see. Well, I can start here, 'cause this is, this is what it looks, this is what it looks like now, which is the repaired state, the, the other one I'll find in a second. But, um, this is the road going in that, if, if any, I think Paul and I might've been the only ones here when we approved this. But this bridge crossing was a major point of contention anyway, it's still there, still fine. Um, this is the road as repaired. That's all the runoff into the thing, which is about three, three or four feet deep. But anyway, this is, this is the repair work that they did. Um, if I pause the share, I can go to my email and I can find very quickly, just because it was, it was pretty impressive. Um, the, um, oh god, there's too many things on my screen. Um, let's see, planning board. And, here we go. All right. Here we go. Gotta find all the links first.
It's so quiet.
All right. Let's see.
Again, this, this is for a prior permit for our telecommunications off of the end of Winusnok.
Yeah, and there's, they're mixing him with
And the hill.
They're mixing him with emails from SBA, too, so I'm trying to find
There were some rain events that totally washed out the road into the culvert
Here we go, I found them.
And on to the driveway.
This is, this is going down towards, this is the neighbor's house, Mr. Dooling, who was the one that, that alerted me to the issues. That was the, the bridge, there was just some mud and runoff, that wasn't bad. This is the access road up to the cell tower, which was more or less impassable at one point, as soon as it catches up. Oops, some of those culverts, some of those swales were almost two feet deep, so, anyway, they fixed it, it's, they're gonna be back in front of us at some point in the next year or so, for their five-year, their, their permit expires at some point, I think, end of this year.
December, yes.
December, this December, so they'll have to seek a renewal or new application.
Yep, and when I talked to the gentleman at SBA, Greg, if you get his last name, he had said that it was a coincidence, 'cause they had just started getting everything together to come in front of the board, so, there's that. And, oh, and then the other side, I got a call from Counselor Cragan tonight about the RFP for Laurel and Rollstone is in front of city property tomorrow, and she was curious if I, or the planning board, had any concerns to convey to her. I did reiterate to her that it's gonna be in front of the planning board at one point, anyway, but I told her what I had, my initial concern that I mentioned to Liz quite a while ago, is, I guess, the RFP, and Liz, you, I haven't seen, Paul, I haven't even seen it yet, it's just been explained to me, this is the old school
Okay.
On the triangle there of Rollstone and Laurel. So, you have the land up top, where the old, 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 old school that was torn down was, and then you have the school in the bottom. From what I heard, the RFP involves townhouses on the top portion
Yep.
And then renovating the building into 10 units
Correct.
In the bottom portion. So, my concern was twofold. The first concern, the primary concern is that the building might be somewhat cost prohibitive, so I worry that someone does the townhouses, and gets to the building and says, oh, we just can't afford to do it. So, I think if it ever gets in front of our board, and my suggestion to Sally, or at least I mentioned it to her, was, the principal concern I would have is to tell the developer, you have to do the building first, you have to at least do it in conjunction with the townhouses at the top. And then the other issue is, just, and this is one thing I suggested to Counselor Cragan, although I think it's probably more in the mayor's wheelhouse, is when the RFP is accepted, you make a condition of that RFP, that that lot can't be subdivided, because the way the frontage works in that lot, that upper portion theoretically could be subdivided from the lower portion, and the whole purpose of this is to develop the building, not to give someone the right to develop the vacant land on the top. So, those are my two suggestions. But again, the planning board will have a crack at this, probably months down the road, so.
And can, can I add to that? The, the city can certainly do clawback in the deeds. I don't know that we want to clawback that building, but, but if nothing comes of it, the city can do that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I hold out hope that something can happen, but I also have been involved with that project for long enough to know that there's a reason why it hasn't happened yet, 'cause it's very cost prohibitive to renovate that building. So, but, awesome if it happens.
And then, just as Lisa mentioned, there's been just more oversight of game on occurring with signage, and there's a big event coming up in June, so, they're working with all the departments to try to work out a plan to deal with the traffic. So, it's on the radar, still on the radar.
Very much so.
But higher up on the radar with this, we got a very, was it base date games coming, so enormous amount of vehicles, so.
And, and, and I guess for Liz, since we're here and we're talking about it, I did, Sergeant Boudreaux had asked me that, to, to send my contacts to Counselor Squalia and Counselor Kucha, because they were already gonna start looking into that, an auxiliary plan for the neighbors, if, if they want it. So, Counselor Squalia already replied, she already sent it out, and she said this weekend she's doing that, so.
Oh, so they're gonna meet with the residents?
She made, I, I don't remember how she worded it in the email, but she made it sound like she was going door-to-door, at least that's how I read the email. I don't know. I, I, I'll talk to Sam at some point when it happens, but, like I said, I wanted to loop in Counselor Kucha, because he's the Ward III counselor, so at lea, as long as one of them is handling it, all I care about is that the residents know about it. So, that was my only, my only goal there.
All right.
So, we'll see.
I think it's, anybody else have any communications or projects?
Did you get my minutes, the, the, the addenda, the change?
I did, I did.
So, next month, if you wanna incorporate the changes and just upload that
I've got a lot more changes to go with that.
I'm sure.
Okay.
And, and that way, if people wanna look at it, they can, they don't have to start from scratch, and if anyone knows how to use the track feature function, you can use that, and it'll account for who makes what changes, so.
So, without Mike, we're trying to work out, like, revamp a bit about the minutes, so, something that can, can work, that we get them maybe, you know, less verbiage and, and more technical detail, so that they can be used better to a tool for writing the decisions, and be for reference points back to the actual documents, transcripts, and videos, so. Work on that. All right, anything else, anybody?
I do. We, we still need Alex to stop by the city clerk's office, when he has a moment and
Alex.
Sign the registry of deed document.
It's at the town clerk's office.
Okay. So, Alex, at any time, stop by City Hall, the city clerk's office, to sign the
It's a registry authorization.
Registry authorization, so that's for A&R plans, so that it's authorized, it gives authorization.
Or a, or a signature card, I think. Is it a signature card?
Oh.
I think it's a signature.
No, they record the piece of paper in the registry, they record that paper in the registry, so if anyone has any questions as to the legitimacy of a signature, they can compare it to the paper.
Right. So, you got that, Alex?
Yeah, I'll probably swing by tomorrow, then.
Oh, all right.
Awesome.
See, you, you, it's saved in perpetuity.
Wow.
Legacy, look at that, we have
Until there's enough board members, I think we've done three of them, so, until there's enough board members that aren't on one
Your signature's on there, staying.
Yeah, yep.
All right.
Okay.
Being said, if there's nothing else this evening?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn, in a second. All those in favor?